Hello, sorry, I think I must have had a wrong link. It kept coming up invalid, so I wasn't sure. Thanks.
Okay, you bet. Well, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. And we are here for the city council meeting for the city of Woodland Hills, Utah. We've got all members of the city council here. We're going to excuse the mayor. She actually may pop into the meeting at some point. But because, for those who don't know, she fell and broke her leg in three places today, so she is not feeling well. And was concerned that even if she could participate, she wouldn't be in the right frame of mind to run a meeting. So she may pop in just to listen. But we don't want to imply that that means that she's able to run the meeting and that she's ditching, just ditching out on the meeting. She's not. She's really hurt. So hopefully we'll have her back in good shape here soon. Okay, Jody, we're recording this, I'm assuming?
Yes, we are.
Okay, figured. Okay, well, we're going to jump right in then. Before we get started, I wanted to have a brief conversation before we even, we've got a couple of public comments that some of our citizens wanted us to read in. We're going to do that. Before we do that, I wanted to raise an issue that might resolve the concerns that they had. Dave and Wayne, are you guys feeling, I just talked briefly to the mayor about this. I haven't talked to either of you about this. But were either of you wanting to say something before we get to the public comments on the issue of Title 11?
I'd be happy to. And again, I mean, the, how do I, how do I say this? The title as it, as it's written right now, and as it's up on the website, is what we're initially considering before we have our public hearing. But Sharon contacted me eight days ago. It was on the 15th of February. And raised a concern about the Hillside Development Section not being in the Title 11. Now, the, the, you know, in doing some investigating, that had been, initially, it had been moved over into the Development and Construction Standards. So it was over there. And then when the consolidation happened by the codifiers, they removed it from the title because it was already over in the Development and Construction Standards. There's some concern that that's not sufficient enough, that it needs to be in the title, in the Title 11. And so, you know, that was the concern that was raised. I've spent the last eight days kind of investigating that, trying to find out. So over the last couple of days, I've contacted three different engineering firms and just asked them, I said, with the cities you've worked with, where do they put it? And here was the interesting thing. I got three different answers, which tells me that there isn't a consistent place to put it. And it's really kind of up to the city. So, you know, initially, it was kind of told to us that it made more sense in the Development and Construction Standards. At this point, it's kind of my opinion that it honestly, it could go either way. But if it's going to cause an uproar and problems, then it probably makes sense to just put it back in Title 11 and just call it good. That's, that's kind of where I have gotten to. And again, I want to just make sure that the citizens know that it's been eight days. And over that eight days, I've looked into it. I've contacted engineering firms. And sometimes that just takes time. It's not that we, that anyone at the city was necessarily against it. I will say that this isn't the first I've heard of it, that we, you know, we'd heard rumblings about this for probably a few months. But if, again, we just kind of always blew it off because it was in the Development and Construction Standards. So it's not like it wasn't there. It just had been moved. So the idea is that we can move it back. We can keep it where it is. I'll let the public hearing kind of guide us on, on what the public wants to, wants to see. But that's where it sits right now. And Wayne, if you wanted to add anything, you can.
There were, as it came over into the Development and Construction Standards, there were a few adjustments made to, to it. In looking at those, those can easily be removed to go back to what the original standards were, as it was included in the subdivision ordinance. And further consideration could be made down the road to see if we wanted to make those minor changes in the process through a public hearing and, and adoption by the, by the city council. But I agree with you. I don't, I don't see any reason why they couldn't be taken back into the subdivision ordinance and, and left there until further looked at or reviewed down the road.
Okay. The only thing I would add to that is, as I discussed it with the mayor today, it's been raised, the issue has been raised that the change was made without a chance for a public hearing, public comment. And it seems to me that that's, we're finding that that is the case. Now, this today is a public hearing and public comment, so we could handle it this way. But I, I'm, I'm with the two of you. In my investigation, limited as it was, it seems to me that, that some of the issues raised, especially when, when we, you know, hear from Dave, that we're getting multiple responses from the engineers. So maybe it's not as, as, maybe it's fairly common that it is here, there, and everywhere. I don't mean throughout the ordinances, but that it's in different locations. There's not a uniform way to handle it. It seems to me that, that putting it back into the Hillside Development Language, back into Title 11, makes sense. Any other comments from the, the council before we go to the public comment?
I have one. From a functionality standpoint, does it make any difference?
Dave or Wayne, I'll let you guys answer that.
And everything that I have gathered from, like I said, from the engineering firms, there's not a lot of difference. The Development and Construction Standards are as much a part of our ordinance as anything, but they're not in the official title. And so, you know, that, that's kind of the, the pivot point for some people is they really want them in the title. And I don't think it makes a functional difference one way or the other.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I have more to say later after I hear from citizens.
Yeah, I do too. But that was my same question was what Bob had, because in my investigation, I thought, well, it's in there. But I didn't know if it made a difference on which section it was in. So I'll two-way.
Okay. Now, in fairness, we've gotten some responses from some of our citizens that believe that there is a functional difference. And so I'll put that out, that there are those who believe that there is a functional difference. And they've laid, laid out their, their arguments and cases in emails to city council members. But, so, so there are those of that opinion.
I would hope that they would address those in the public hearing so that we can learn what those might be.
Okay. So with that in mind, let's turn it to that section. We've got two comments that were emailed earlier. If I can find those now, there it is. And we're asked to be read into the record on the public comment section. So the first is from Dr. Tan and Fuja, and his reads as follows. "The Hillside Development Regulations Protect Public Safety and Should Be Restrictive and Not Easily Changed. These regulations should be kept in both the subdivision ordinance and the Development and Construction Standards. To avoid another referendum and delays to codification, please leave the laws in their legally original state and return the Hillside Development Regulations to Title 11." And then he has four points. Number one, Mr. Pratt has repeatedly stated to the Citizen Working Group that the public, that he, and the public, that it is his desire to put the laws into their original state and to remove undocumented changes from our laws to be codified. Number two, removing the Hillside Development Regulations from our subdivision ordinance is an undocumented change. There is no documentation to show that the Hillside Development Requirements were ever legally removed from the subdivision ordinances. They are still legally part of this ordinance. Taking them out of Title 11 represents a significant change to our laws, which should not be part of codification. Number three, the original and legally current Hillside Development Regulations found in the subdivision ordinance contain subtle but substantive differences from those found in the Hillside Site Development Regulations found in the Development and Construction Standards. They work together and both are needed. Four, removing the Hillside Development Requirements from Title 11 makes them less restrictive and easier to change. "Neighboring cities with much, with much less hillside terrain carefully protect hillside regulations in the subdivision ordinances," in parentheses, "or zoning ordinances," parentheses, "Springville, and special zoning overlays," parentheses, "Provo. Making these laws less restrictive, easier to change, and according to the city attorney's position, harder to appeal, is a bad idea. Recent awareness of avalanche dangers constitutes only one reason why our city should make hillside development as restrictive as possible to promote public safety and the image of our community as described in the City General Plan. If the city council truly wants to make hillside development less restrictive and easier to change, then the council should clearly present this to the citizens of Woodland Hills and obtain robust public input through public notices and hearings in a process after and apart from codification," submitted by Dr. Tan and Fuja, and then his address in Woodland Hills. The second public hearing comment is from Megan Fuja, and it reads as follows. "When codifying our laws, the city should follow the record of backing documents that they have in hand and, and that can be confirmed. I urge the city council to simply vote to amend the proposed Title 11 document to keep the Hillside Development Regulation Language in Title 11 as currently found in the subdivision ordinance. It does not hurt anything to retain this code language in the subdivision, subdivision ordinance. This retention of the code language within Title 11 will allow codification to proceed without a possible referendum and will keep the promise of city council members to follow the backing documents. I strongly recommend that the city council restore the Hillside Development Regulation Language found in the current subdivision ordinance to Title 11 prior to codification rather than running the risk of another referendum if such language is removed as part of codification. If the city desires to make changes to the ordinance, such changes should be recommended separately from codification with, with proper notice and public hearings encouraging rigorous debate. If the city desires to make changes to their Hillside Development Land Use Regulations, it would be great to follow the example of Provo City and hold town halls style meetings, which allow for question and answer discussions and for all opinions and voices to be heard, so that the final result is well vetted and openly debated. Please vote to codify Title 11 with the specific language of the Hillside Development Section of the subdivision ordinance as found in the version codified in 2008 retained as part of our subdivision ordinances found in Title 11. Thank you, Megan Fuja." So those are the two comments, public comments, that were asked to be read into the record, which we've now done. Are there any other public comments that anyone would like to make? Jody, do you see anyone?
Sharon's ready.
Sharon, yeah. Sharon, go ahead. Two minutes, please.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank Dave truly from the bottom of my heart for all of the work he has, he has gone to on, on getting this right. I, I have no idea how many hours he has spent to get this codifying done. And, and he has proven just in what he and Wayne said together just now that they were willing to listen to people. And I'm really, really grateful for that because they kind of took the wind out of my sails. I was going to make the point that as a working group, we had decided that we would absolutely leave things alone unless there was backing for it. Unless we had documentation that something had been done, then we were going to leave it the way it was. And I feel that both Wayne and Dave are agreeing with that and saying, yes, we, we, we've searched. We can't find the backing to take it out, so we've got to leave it in. And so I am just really, really grateful. As a side note, there are more than just me and the Fugits who feel that it should be left in there. And I'd really like to also thank Bob and Doral and Dave for taking a lot of time to listen to me when we talked about it. I feel that you are sincere in trying to, trying to help our laws and our city work the way they are intended to. And so I really appreciate that. I have one little concern, not about Title 11, but about the name of our Transparency Committee. I tried very hard, after I saw the information that was put out, to ask Glenn Anderson to put that information, to, to show an opposing side or to at least say that there are people who have a different opinion. And he said, that's not my job. I am only here, he said, first of all, I don't have time. But I am only here to put out the information I'm given by the city. And I don't feel like that really is what, I think that the word Transparency Committee is a misnomer. And so I think that Glenn did a great job in putting the information out, but I think his title should be changed to Communicate, Woodland Hill Communications Specialist or something like that, because I don't think that is real transparency if you don't really express, let people express other sides of an issue. And so I would just like to suggest that his title be changed, because I think transparency suggests that you're going to get transparency. And I don't think that was it. But on the plus side, only 14 people looked at it, from what I could see, so it didn't reach a group, huge group of people. But I still think that it's a misnomer to call him the Transparency Committee. But thank you. I feel like you've listened to us.
Okay, thanks, Sharon. Any other public comments?
Jody, this is Ben. Can I, can I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead, Ben.
Thank you. So just related to Title 11, just wanted to thank the city, the council. We've had a lot of discussions previously about, in particular, the private roads and gates. And I know that there's ongoing discussions about that. I just wanted to say, just on public record, that, you know, Summit Creek would like to continue working with the city to try and get whatever possible approved on gates and private roads. I know that's going to continue. And then also just a comment about the, the section on trails. Summit Creek currently has some trails in existence, and we plan to include more in the future. We've stated that those can be accessed by the citizens of Woodland Hills. There is in Title 11, now it's been crossed out. Some, some things that prohibit like motorized vehicles and pet waste and those things, we would be concerned with that if those are taken out of, of the, of the city code that would prohibit people from using motorized vehicles. We wouldn't want that on, on our trails. So we would like, prefer to have those back in, and maybe that's going to happen in the future, but we would not want motorized vehicles or people not required to pick up after themselves if they use those trails. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Any other public comments?
Paul, maybe I could just, maybe I could add just a touch on Ben's comment to maybe help clarify.
Okay.
A new section was drafted for consideration to put into, to add to our existing trail section in our ordinance. When the effort was made to kind of remove new things, that was one of the new things that got removed for the time being. But an effort will be made in the future here to present that change through a public hearing and with both the Planning Commission as well as the city council to, to add to the existing information that's in the subdivision ordinance on trails. So we'll look forward to look, making that update through the normal process here in the near future.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and we also need to keep in mind, there's more than one kind of trail. And I think when we do that work, I'm hoping that we actually like specify, this is a walking path trail. This is a biking trail. This is, you know, whatever it is that we specify that so that we can be a little more clear. And we haven't been. All of our, all of our documents just say trail, and we don't know what, what kind of trail it is.
And along that, Dave, I'd also like to just to bring awareness that I think we need to be cognizant of requirements for ADA.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I want to give Doral and Carrie a chance to respond, but I wanted to check to see if there was any other public comments before we did that.
Paul, this, Paul, this is Steve Dickert, if I can have a minute.
You bet, Steve.
So in Section 115-2, Paragraph D, okay, I'll allow the city council members. It's Section 11. Five, two. Paragraph D. It's on page 26 of the Title 11 with comments on ordinance changes, if you're on that. There's, there has been an insert here that has been identified as being added. I, I think that the request on this, you know, in, in accordance with what we're trying to do with Title 11, at least I think is what's happening with the codification, is to go back to what is currently on the books. If in fact that's the goal, then I think it would behoove the city council to read very closely the comments that have been made there. Because that yellow section related to the, the gates has been added, but it was only added not as part of a prior standard, but as it relates solely to a belief of, you know, some people. But I think that should, if, if we're going to do that, I think the city should be doing that through a public hearing and not through the codification process and leave it the way it is because it wasn't part of the original ordinance.
Thanks, Steve. Again, Dave, I'm sorry to keep falling back on you, but you seem to, you have such a good working knowledge of Title 11, you are, you and Wayne. Do you have any responses or reactions to that, that comment?
Um, give me about five minutes and I might.
Okay, we'll come back to that then.
That, that has to do with, as it reads, "No public street shall be gated except on city property where the city council determines the necessity of public welfare." I guess it's probably more for clarification. A public street implies it's not gated. It's open to the public. And so that, that is one purpose why that was put in as some clarification, just by way of background, Steve.
And, and I appreciate that, Wayne, but given the fact that there is an issue related to, to gates, right? And the preapproval on plots of gates, my suggestion to the city council would be that you wait on putting that in because it is different than what was the original ordinance. And I think that if, if we go back through all of the history on this, and David, you know, will probably correct me and probably rightfully so, is that we're trying to get back to what the original ordinances were so that then we can have public hearings or meetings or, you know, past changes in ordinances related to that as part of the codification. So that's, that's just my, that's my opinion, Wayne, and I understand the clarity there, but I think it, it doesn't meet what the city council, I think, was trying to do with the original codification and, you know, why we're going back and forth and really taking it back in a clear view on what goes into Title 11 based on the ordinances that already existed.
I understand. Thank you, Steve. Any other public comments?
Yeah, this is, this is Chris Crone. So I, I'm a, I'm a resident member of Summit Creek. And one of the concerns that me and my wife have, you know, specifically is that when we bought our home, you know, the gates were a part of that purchase. You know, so approving Title 11 and actually giving the city permission to, you know, remove those is at least a really huge concern for us. It's concerning for our home value. It's concerning for a multimillion dollar purchase that we made. You know, I've done over a billion dollars in real estate transactions, and I have quite a bit of scientific data and proof as to what gates, for example, do to home values. And so the majority of the members of Summit Creek that have purchased those homes did so as, as a part of an understanding about that community, about the gates, you know, and then on top of that, we were here when the gates were functional. And then when they became non-functional, we got to experience firsthand and still do what happens regularly with traffic in this community. And so we have, you know, we've, we've seen that the gates have provided us with, with a lot less traffic violations and people not driving 40 or 50 miles an hour on a road that is 30 miles an hour that should be moved to 25 in the first place. And, you know, my children aren't allowed to walk on that road. And so there's more homes going in. But, you know, as I've connected and talked with just about, you know, every, every one of the neighbors here, several of them are represented. The, the concern is something that was a part of our community and a part of our financial decision and a part of moving here is, you know, now being revoked and taken away. That affects our property values. That affects Woodland Hills property values. And then I'm also concerned just about the, you know, the traffic. So personally, I'm completely opposed to this being included in Title 11. It would give you, give the city the ability just to go ahead and remove the gates.
Thanks, Chris. Any other public comments?
Now, this is Alan Lee's.
Go ahead, Alan.
Also, how you doing? I'm also a resident in Summit Creek, and I, without repeating myself, what Chris said, I agree with what Chris said. My understanding and my due diligence, I bought this property, is there was a preliminary plat approval that approved a, a gate. I, I find it, you know, I would, I would find it probably maybe even illegal for now, now the city to change that. And, you know, I'm in the development business, so I understand that process. And so I just wanted of record that I agree with Chris, and we should have further discussion on whether those gates are taken out or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Any other public comments?
Oh, I have a comment.
Yes.
I think we need to put this in perspective in terms of gates because the private roads and gates issue has been around for a long time. And it's actually part of the ordinances and has been for a number of years. Now, there is the situation with Summit Creek, and we understand that issue was there to be discussed. But there have been, the codification did not change the fact that there are to be no private roads and no private gates within Woodland Hills.
Thank you, Sharon. Any other public comments?
This is Gay Phillips. I, I would just like to state that I agree with Chris and Alan. And I purchased my property here knowing that it was a gated community. And I feel very strongly with what the others have said, that we shouldn't just close the gates without more public hearing.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Yeah, hi, John Michael Johnson here. I just, I just want to go on record as well. My wife and I kind of searched the Western United States and looked for a community that was a gated community, a wonderful community. We found Summit Creek at Woodland Hills, and we bought property there, and we just went in for permit to build a house. And we're at the first lot, as you come up Summit Creek Road. And we have stayed there, and we've stayed on Summit Creek Road, and we've seen the Um, and we have stayed there and we've stayed on Summit Creek Road and we've seen the people driving by in the evening at forty, fifty miles an hour and especially down the hill. Um, so, so I even brought up to the development team there about, um, you know, putting in speed bumps, like what are things we can do, but, but we really did buy the land, understanding this was a gated community. So, um, just want to let you know that if, if it were to become ungated, uh, that does have a huge impact on our decision to even build and, and live there. And that was it.
Then thanks, John Michael. Any other public comments?
Yeah, this is Rhett Smith.
Go ahead, Rhett.
Uh, I, I don't have much time. I'm actually working and trying to listen, so I'm in and out, but, um, I'd just like to go on record that I completely agree with what Alan Lee's and Chris Crone had said. Were actually the first house, um, as you head north on Summit Creek Drive, uh, past the gate. And, um, the, the speeds are, uh, tremendous. And it's just an, it's just an unsafe, it's not a neighborhood road, but, uh, aside from that, um, I disagree with what they said, so I wanted to go on record for that.
Great. Thanks, Rhett.
Yeah.
Any other public comments? Okay, wanted to just, uh, thank everybody. Oh, yes?
Paul, this is the Tanners, uh, David and Natalie.
Yes.
Uh, likewise, we're residents of Summit Creek and, uh, uh, want to go on record as well, just, uh, uh, with the, uh, agreement from Alan Lee's and Chris Crone and others who have expressed uh, concerns about the gate and, uh, we're in agreement with their position.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
Dirk DeHart here, also resident of Summit Creek, just going on the record to agree with what has been said, especially the, you know, purchasing of our land, uh, knowing that the gate was there was part of that purchase. So, um, anyways, just reiterating what others have said.
Dirk, can you please repeat your last name? We didn't hear you where there were some children talking.
DeHart, D E H A R T.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all who have, who have participated and made comments. Um, we'll now move out of the public comment portion. Um, we get back to city council agenda. Here we go. Okay. Um, into our working session now. Uh, so the first, um, topic, no surprise, is city code title eleven subdivision ordinance. Um, we've heard quite a bit about that ordinance. Uh, if I could sum that up, two major issues. One is the hillside development, uh, the exclusion of the hillside development language from, uh, the proposed title eleven. And the second being the, uh, change to, uh, the, um, issue of gates, uh, in the proposed title eleven. Um, Carrie and Dora, I wanted to give, if it's okay, get one, give both of you, uh, first opportunity to, to talk, uh, as the, the rest of us have made some comments already.
Go ahead, Carrie.
All right, um, thank you. Um, I wanted the residents to know that yes, we are listening and we hear what you're saying. We've had a conversation, I think it was even before COVID, wasn't it, Chris, that, that David and I came and, and we listened to, to what was happening? We've also been working with Steve and, and Ben on this, uh, situation with the gates. Um, we, we hear you, we're listening, we're trying to figure out what is the best solution for the town overall because as you know, our, our ordinances are citywide, not just for one particular area. But, um, I agree that, uh, that this may be something that we need to take out of, of, uh, title eleven until we have more adequate time to look over it. Um, I think Sharon got off the call. I don't see her on there. I wanted to apologize when she called me. I was out of town without, uh, oh, there you are, Sharon, I see you. Um, I was, I wanted to apologize. I was out of town without cell service and just have not had the chance to, to call you back, um, on title eleven. I'm understanding the issue with hillside development a little bit better after the comments tonight. I, I did see that it was in the other section and I, I thought, well, if it's there, it's there, but if there is some sort of function functionality on why concerns and why it needs to be in one place or another, I'm open to that discussion. Um, David is kind of our guru on this and, and I would like to hear a little bit more, um, of what that means to us. Is this, I mean, I know that there has been some, um, some very emotional feelings about hillside development and what that means to our community. We do live on a mountain, but at the same time, um, we want to make sure that we're, we understand what you're feeling and hopefully you can understand um, the process going forward. As far as transparency committee, Sharon, um, the transparency committee was not supposed to be the communication committee. Um, it's supposed to be separate. Uh, I am over communications and, and we're supposed to function in, in two different ways. I have suggested to the mayor that your, your committee, we got the postcard that you mailed out to us and, and I am hoping that, that those of you on that postcard would be willing to serve on the transparency committee and make sure that it truly is living up to its name of, of what it's meant to be and that we can separate that from city communication. So, um, hopefully you would be open to that and that we can look into that a little bit farther. Um, and with that, I think I, I wrote down, I wrote down everybody's comments and concerns and I hope that we can talk about those in a little bit more detail. Doral?
Thanks, thanks, Carrie. Thanks, Paul. Um, first of all, I, I find great value in the citizen input we've had this evening. Uh, um, the council, as I've watched for several years, we do not have a deliberate intention of frustrating citizens. We, we really don't and, and unfortunately, I think I can honestly say none of us have had training in codification of ordinances. And so we're kind of doing this for the last six years by the seat of our pants and, and maybe we've made some mistakes and, and, and maybe we could have done better. In fact, I'm sure we could have, but, but your input and your referendum and the things that you do to, to try and help us make better decisions, I, I don't mind that. I think, I think what we want is what's best for everyone. Um, so I ha, I'm happy to use citizen input on, on putting this stuff where you feel most, most comfortable because I do not have the answers of, of, uh, of why and wherefore's in, in, in some of these ordinance decisions. Um, the thing that bugs me a little bit is I, I find problems when you put the same rules in two different places. So if it's got to be in the land side and over in title eleven, that, that's, that's asking for problems if we, if we ever change one or the other, especially five years down the road when people forget what it's in two places. So that bugs me a little bit. I'm sure someone smarter and has, has an answer for that, but, but it's got to be kept exactly the same in both places. So I, I do have a, 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 a very firm opinion on a different topic about those gates. Um, I highly respect those people that bought under certain circumstances and I don't ever want to vote on some change that would change the environment around anyone's home. When they, when they bought, I, I agree with they, they saw what they saw and they had the right to assume what they saw. So, so uh, hearing from, I, I, I went down Summit Creek Drive and I counted twenty-eight homes just on that road. There's probably more now, but you people that saw what you saw when you bought your property deserve to have that stay the way you saw it. That, that's, I, I have a strong feeling about that. So I'm committed to, to try and work with the council to, uh, to support your opinions on that. I don't like gates on public roads, but that's not your fault that, 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 uh, that things are going that way. So, so I'll be quiet now, but, but I appreciate you citizens. There's a lot of you on tonight and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Doral. Uh, Dave, Bob, any follow-up comments?
I don't think so. Uh, I'll go ahead, Bob. You can go first.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to, to back up one of the things that Doral said, and that is having redundant requirements in different locations. As a, um, basis of, uh, basic document configuration control, that is an absolute no-no. You never want to do that. It will always come back and bite you at some point. With that being said, there is a way of getting around it and that is, is having one of the um, locations as the, the, the primary location and then the other one pointing back to that, not quoting the words, but just say something about referencing it to find more detail, look at such and such. But if we are going to try to put exact words in two different locations as a requirement, we're asking for trouble. That's, that's only comment I had about that.
Thanks, Bob. Dave, thoughts?
Yeah, so are, are we basically into the agenda now?
Yeah, we're, we're into the, um, we're into the, uh, yeah, the, uh, work session portion.
Okay, so, um, as far as uh, title eleven is concerned, the suggestion that I, I would give, and I've, I'm reiterating what I said earlier, is that we, um, put back in the hillside development standards as they are in the subdivision development standards, word for word. Um, that we add that back in. Now, as I've, um, looked at, um, the gate, uh, issue, I actually agree that we should take that out. Now, I want to be very careful in what I say here because I don't want, if it, I'm, I'm going back over something that we did almost a year ago when we met with Summit Creek, but as we explained then, when, uh, Summit Creek was developed and when that initial plat was, um, put in place, it did say gate slash monuments on the plat and it did say semi-private roads on the plat. And we're, none of us are sure why that was. And it was, I don't want to think poorly of anyone, honestly, and I realize that Steve and his team have come on after that, well after that. So they were after it. Honestly, I was after it, except I was on the planning commission, um, at that time. I do know that the Mountain Villa overlay zone specifically prohibits gates and specifically says you may have a monument. And so we think that that's why that that was in there, but we don't know. So I don't want to devolve down into a gate discussion tonight. What I think would be prudent is to remove it out of the title eleven and then have that discussion. And I think that that the, does need to be done and we need to involve the full community on that discussion. Um, you know, Summit Creek's got a new, a, a new preliminary plat that they are proposing. Um, and I think that it deserves, um, fair consideration from everyone. So, anyway, I'd like to have that discussion later. I'd like to remove it from that one section in title eleven and that's kind of what I would propose that we do at, at the end of the meeting.
Thanks, Dave. I, I would actually, as far as my comment, I would mirror what Dave just said. Uh, tho, those are my two issues is a, anytime we have it, something introduced through the codification process, um, we, if it has any substantive application, um, I, I think it needs, it just needs to go through the public hearing process. Um, so I would agree with that, uh, both of your statements here, David, and I think that they, they're reflected in other comments as well of the other council members. Okay, any other comments, uh, by the, the city council on, um, on the two issues on title eleven or any other issues on title eleven?
Oh, one other thing I was going to say, Paul. No matter how we vote, um, since I'm kind of the guy that's been, uh, making the edit editorial changes to the PDFs before we send them, I will make those and then I will post on the website a copy of the, they call it the comment summary. So, um, you will see the title eleven and then you'll see the comment summary. The comment summary just shows any changes that have been made to the document, so it makes it easier to read. You don't have to go through all. I think this one's seventy pages. You don't have to go through all those. You just have to go through the comment summary and see exactly the changes that have been made.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Okay, um, if there aren't any other comments, uh, let's, let's move to the second issue, second item, which is the city code title twelve. Uh, Wayne, uh, we've got you ticketed to maybe introduce this issue.
Yes, we, uh, have had several public hearings on this with the planning commission. Uh, this is the, uh, title on Stormwater and, uh, it's a following a state mandate, uh, for the benefit of those who are tuned in and listening here tonight. It requires inspections, the city to do inspections of, uh, onsite, um, building development, uh, both in a subdivision as well as the individual lot owners to ensure that, uh, there's no hazard, uh, liquid that is be, that is being allowed to, uh, seep into the underground and potentially the idea is to, uh, to avoid the contamination of groundwater. So, uh, this is a state requirement. Uh, a new ordinance has been put into place in form of title twelve to, um, to address that. It requires, uh, the builder themselves to have ongoing monitoring. Uh, and the city then is required to have a monthly inspection of each of the building sites within the city. Uh, larger cities, uh, have hired, uh, brought on board contractors, uh, that are permanent employees of the city. Uh, at this point in time, we cannot justify that. So the city has looked outside for a private contractor, which we have found, uh, who does this kind of work and inspection. And, uh, the city has signed a contract with him to conduct these inspections foreign and behalf of the city. But these inspections are paid for by the builder. And so a fund is, um, established at the beginning of the building cycle uh, by monies that the builder, uh, provides to the city. And from those funds, then the city will pay, uh, an independent building inspector contractor to do the inspections. If there's, uh, problems that they find, then there are certain, um, processes that they follow. Uh, warnings and whatnot, uh, could ultimately terminate in the financial fines if the builder is not, uh, properly monitoring, uh, their onsite building to ensure that hazardous, uh, liquids, et cetera, are, uh, being kept from the groundwater. So, all that being said, that the city or the planning commission is recommended to the city council, a unanimous vote to adopt and approve that new title twelve that will be the parameters that the city would work with in monitoring and enforcing this, uh, this program. So that's our recommendation to the city council to, uh, for consideration.
Thanks, Wayne. Um, any comments from the city council members?
A, a point of clarification for Wayne. Wayne, I understood that, uh, just SWIP or however you want to pronounce the acronym, uh, also includes, uh, foreign dust mitigation. Is that correct?
Um, it can, it, but the primary, if it's affecting the groundwater, that's the primary, uh, monitoring of it. Now, uh, potentially if the dirt gets on the road, that dirt is required to be, uh, swept up and not left on the road where rain could come and wash it into, into a system that would contaminate the groundwater. So in that sense, there's, uh, it's basically kind of keeping a clean worksite and, and monitoring so that it, uh, it does retain that. So in that respect, In that respect, dust conceivably could be, could be part of the, the inspection process.
Okay, it was my understanding that was part of the airborne, uh. Uh, protection that, uh, that they maintain. Uh, dust and that any, uh, lot over, I think it was a half an acre, had to have. A, uh, foreign dust mitigation plan as part of their SWIP.
Hey, Bob, you mind if I chime in on that just a little bit?
Please.
And so, i- i- and you're kind of both correct. So the, the SWIP is a storm water, what stands for storm water prevention pollution plan. So that's. Basically preventing, uh, uncontrolled sediments from leaving the site during storm events, et cetera, tracking mud on roads, stuff like that. In addition to that though, um, and you're right, in, in, in sites over half acre. Um, contractors are generally required, depending on their operations, but are generally required to get what they call a fugitive dust control plan.
Okay.
Which is a separate permit from the storm water permit. So there are two different permits.
All right, thank you.
You have to apply separately for them, but.
Appreciate that clarification.
I have a question too. I know that, uh. And maybe Ted, you know how to answer this one, but does every property, why it's being built, need to have a silk fence around it to, to either do the dust or the, the, the water? Um, mitigation is every property that, I, I mean, as we're driving around, we now see the, the SWIP signs up in front of property, but. Is that part of the requirement is to put one of those, um, silk fences or, or you know, that plastic around the bottom? So it doesn't leak out onto the ground?
So it, it depends on the, uh, activities determine what the measures are. The best, they call them best management practices. So the, the activities determine what they are. So for example, if there is a large stockpile of dirt, then. Likely the identified measure would be a silk fence on the bottom of it. If it's stormwater running off onto a road where there's an existing storm drain, sometimes you'll see them put those straw waddles, they call them. Around the inlet basins to prevent silts from running into the storm drain system. So. The measures or the best management practices are determined by the construction activity. So. It, it may or may not be necessary to have silk fence. It just depends on what the activities are.
And, and this says SWIP inspector, but it would be the one that determines that with the, the builder at the time. Because as I'm driving around town, I see some that do and some that don't. And it was kind of confusing to me on. Who determines what, uh, what is actually needed? If it's, if it's the SWIP inspector or. If it's something that we as a city with this title have in place so that a developer or a builder would know what the regulations were.
So, and, and maybe Wayne can help with this, but generally when they, when the contractor starts on a site, he has to apply for the permit. In which he identifies his, his best management practices. And then the inspector is inspecting to verify that he has implemented and is maintaining those BMPs. Um, so they'll identify those and, you know. It could be various things. A lot of times on, on smaller sites where there's not a lot of stockpile, you'll see trackout pads, they call them. That's all the rock gravel. Where they go in and out of sites or call trackout pads. So. Um, so some, some, it just depends on what gets approved as part of their permit. And that's what the inspector will inspect you.
Okay, so that is part of our permitting, um.
And it, it's a state permit, right?
Oh, it's a, oh, yeah. The state is the one that permits for SWIP. We just have to enforce it.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I remember that now.
If the inspector goes around and sees something that's not being enforced. Then he's going to bring that to attention of the builder and the builder's going to have to make some accommodation for that. Then the inspector's going to make sure then that, that that is, that requirement is being met on that particular site.
And does that inspector also notify the city that this, um, this builder has, has been, um, I guess warned that they're out of compliance or? Or how does that interact?
He will, yep. There's, there's three different stages that the inspector takes, each more, more enforcement oriented than the other, but that will be part of his report that he provides to the city. If there's been a warning, if, uh, if a warning hasn't accomplished what is needed. If he has, uh, written, uh, written them up, so to speak, or if, uh, he's, uh, recommending some kind of a fine. Against them for non-compliance. That, that will all come to the city for, for review.
So every time the inspector does an inspection, then the city is given a written report on that inspection or only if it's a violation?
No, every inspection report, that's the basis for the inspector getting paid. So he'll provide an inspection report for each site that he inspects each month.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, thanks, Wayne, as always.
Hi, Mark Silvai here. I'm sorry, I didn't get my phone on. You know, I do have a question. Um, you know, Title 12 is a storm water management plan. That's, that's a more comprehensive plan than just the, the SWIP plan. I- is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So there are components of that plan that are going to be, need to be done outside the, the, the caveat of this inspector. Uh, and how, how will those portions of the, uh, of the plan be financed or paid for? Any, any, uh, any idea on that as yet?
The inspector. Everything that's needed to be done to comply with this state statute, the inspector is qualified to do inspections on. So, um, it, we're going through the process now of working out the billing procedures to do this. And, uh, that may be a bit of a work in process when you see what works and what doesn't work. Uh, this applies to subdivisions, uh, as well as, uh, city inspections. That he may be doing of, uh, a city facility, for example, uh, the city center. Uh, to make sure that there's no, um. Hazard material, et cetera, that is being, uh, inadvertently disposed of into the system by the city. So those inspections will be done by him as well.
Uh, cor- correct. I, I, okay, so what I was wondering about, how will those inspections be funded? As, as this plan made any? Is there any plan for funding those items that he would be doing outside of, but the development responsibilities?
City budget.
City budget, okay. I, I just wanted to bring that up because the city's budget's coming up and that's going to be, need to be addressed, I would say, uh, as part of this plan.
There won't be a lot of that, but there will be some.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, uh, moving to the third issue then, discussion on Summit Creek proposed preliminary plat. Wayne, you're up again.
Yeah, I, I wanted to, uh, I kind of combined this too with, uh, with maybe number five. With, uh, with something for the city council to consider. I know that, uh, it has to do with the gates and, uh, private roads. This, the planning commission is going to have a public hearing in March. On a couple of things. And, uh, we could easily include, uh. Uh, public comment on private roads and gates. During that public hearing, if the city council wanted us to do so. Now you might think, well, that may be a little bit premature. And, and maybe it is in some senses. But it's something that, uh, the planning commission sees that it needs to get resolved one way or the other. Uh, it takes a while, uh, to, uh, schedule a, a public hearing. And, uh, between the planning commission and city council. It could be, you know, two or three months, uh, down the road to complete public hearings, uh, between those two groups. So, uh, I know that, um. Summit Creek is in the process of putting together a, a new preliminary plat. That, uh, I fully expect to have included as part of that. Uh, private roads and gates on those roads. So I just wanted to bring this before the council. Um, and see if you wanted us in March. To include that as a topic for a public hearing, which we're going to schedule anyway. If you don't want us to, then, then that's fine. Uh, but I, I just wanted to bring that to your all attention. And you decide, decision really needs to be made tonight. Because if we're going to schedule that, it needs to, uh, get scheduled, um. On the public notice that would probably go for, forward to the newspapers either tomorrow or the next day.
Wayne, what day would that be?
Uh, it's be the third Wednesday of March in conjunction with our regular planning commission meeting.
So you would just schedule a public hearing specifically about, about the gates or specifically about the Summit Creek, um, preliminary plat?
Well, just about, but. I have an opportunity for the public to express their views on private roads and gates in the city. But it would be in conjunction with a couple of other items that we're going to have for a public hearing. So.
And Wayne?
Yes.
The, the. I don't mind, um, in fact, I appreciate the fact that you're, you're willing to push this forward and, um, really wanting to get on top of it. So I love that. The, the one, the one thing that the, the thought that hit me is. You know, those aren't necessarily, um, um. Tied at the hip. Like private roads and then gates. Um, the other thing that we talked about the last meeting when we talked with, uh, Summit Creek. Is there's a lot of different options when it comes to gates. I mean, are they keyed? Are they, uh, keypad? Are they remote? Are they, you know? In other words, if we put in these private roads, what is the access to the general public? I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of different grades there. So. And then, you know, that this, it seemingly doesn't affect all of Woodland Hills. And it may be that, you know, people, uh, you know, in some areas don't care about whether or not there are gates in Summit Creek and. Honestly, that's fine if that's the way people feel. Um, I just want to make sure that, um, we, we get a really good feeling from. All of Woodland Hills, including the Summit Creek people. And I really appreciate all of them showing up tonight. Um, so that we can have a, in, in other words, I'd like to come out of this with a plan. That brings us all together. I don't want to come out of this with a plan that makes us feel separate and like two different. You know, two different countries. I, I just think as a, as a community. Um, we need to all feel comfortable with what we're trying to do here.
Well, I agree. And, and my, our goal, planning commission is, is just to gather input at this stage. When you start talking about particulars, uh, of what kind of gates are they, et cetera. Uh, I think those all kind of fall out, fall within the realm of. Whatever the decision is made, coming together then with Summit Creek and, and making those, making those assessments and, and agreements. Uh, so, again, I know that these ti- I know that Summit Creek is approaching a time when they're going to be. Uh, close to presenting a preliminary plat. And the planning commission cannot approve that. With public, with, with private roads and gates because it's against our ordinance. So I'm trying to forestall, you know, three or four months down the road. Where all this stuff maybe comes together for a decision. Cause that's way after, uh, you know, a marketing time. If, if a decision is made that. Yeah, we're all, the city council makes a decision. We're okay with private gates and roads in the city. Uh. The middle of the summer is, is really not an opportune time for Summit Creek to get that feedback. So that's the idea of trying to do it sooner rather than later. Uh, at least our public hearing would be over with. You would still need to have a public hearing to, uh, to further get the comment. Sometimes they, people know that the planning commission is not a decision-making body. And so we don't always get all the public hearing in the planning commission. It's, it's heard a lot just with the city council. So, uh, since these are land use ordinances, we're looking at changing an ordinance. Uh, if the city wants to move forward with, uh, private roads and gates. So again, public hearings and time it takes to do that and to schedule it. So that's, that's what we're just trying to, to, uh, bring to the forefront a little bit more. Again, I'm just saying that if the city council doesn't feel that the time is ready yet to do that, then, then that's fine. And, and, you know, we, we, we're guided by you, yes.
I'm thinking, so, so I, I think David was correct. I mean, public roads is one issue and gates is another. And so if you would, if you're going forward and having a public hearing, um, can you make sure that, that those two discussions are held separately? That people, um, give their opinions on both so that we would have, uh, a more accurate understanding of where people's thoughts were? I think it's a, if it's okay with those in Summit Creek, I would like us to go forward and have that discussion. Because it, it is something that we don't want to wait, um, until it's right on the heels. We'd rather. At least start the discussion. Uh, you are not the, the policy and decision maker, but you are the first step in all land use. Um, ordinances, whether we're changing or we're adopting. And so. I think it would be important for us to at least start the discussion and it may take several public hearings to come out. I saw that Bucky put something in the chat. He said, I would like to add, we are wanting to amend a preliminary plat that has our, that has already been approved. Um, correct, so, um, Bucky, do you want to say something to us now?
Yeah, I'm just trying to say that preliminary plat's already been approved. We're just wanting to amend it to try to collaborate with the city to solve this issue. So it's not like we're trying to get a new plat approval. Like, we're trying to amend that.
Right, and I think part of our, our problem is, is that although that was approved, we don't have an ordinance that supports that approval. And so. We need to go through the proper procedures that we, we need to do, starting because it's a land use ordinance. With the planning commission and then back to the council. And that involves at least two public hearings, one for them, one for us, but it may involve more depending on what that public comment entails. To we, where we can make that, that recommendation going forward. At least that's my understanding. And so, um. I think it's important. So I would, I would suggest that, yes, we put that on the next planning commission agenda to get the, to get the discussion started.
The other thing I would strongly recommend. Um, is that we make somehow distribute, um, copies of the, of the proposed preliminary plat. And of course, when's, when Summit Creek's ready. But I would hope before the public hearing. Because the other thing that, and, and again, I mean, we, Bucky and I and Steve have had, had this conversation literally for years. Um, what I did not want to see is I didn't want to see Summit Creek looking like a, a jail block with gate, 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 gate down the road. Well, the plan that they've put together does not do that. It, it, it looks pretty good. Um, you have very minimal gates on Summit Creek Drive. You have gates elsewhere. So I think it's important for people, I, I don't want people to emotionally react to this. I want them to seriously study it out. And then. You know, give us their opinion, but it shouldn't be done just based on the word gate or the, the word private road. It should be done based on. Looking at what they've done as far as their plan and then determining whether that's what they want or not.
It, Bucky, is that, is that a possibility? Or Steve, is that a possibility to, to get some information? I mean, that's pretty, that's a pretty tight timeframe to try to get information out, uh, before the third week of March, if we wanted to hold that. Of course, there would be other opportunities for public hearing, but.
I think, I think we can send it now. I mean.
Yeah.
Ben, right? Steve, we haven't. You guys see any reason that we're not ready to send them information now?
We could send it as soon as they need it, as, as of tomorrow.
Great. And, and those things kind of fit in, fit into what I was talking about at our meeting, our special meeting where we were reviewing this. And where I was calling it a marketing plan, um, you know, the more information we have. The more knowledgeable, and when I say we, the citizens, have the, the more knowledgeable we will be to, to make a, a appropriate decision. So I, I would, you know, lo- really love to see that and, and include some, some interesting, uh, numbers about cost savings on roads and. Infrastructure and that kind of thing that are associated with that. I, I think that that came up and was a very valuable, insightful, uh, topic.
Well, you, you want me to send that to you, Jody, to distribute or, or how should I get that to you?
That would be great. If you could send it to me, um, we'll go ahead and get it distributed and get it put, um, out there for everyone to look at.
Okay.
Would we include that with the public, uh, at least we, I guess we would put it on the website then with a link on the public hearing notice is what I would. Is what I would assume. And then everyone would have the opportunity to be able to see that.
Um. We'll work out the logistics of it. I'm not too concerned.
I would also invite uh, maybe Summit Creek, um, well, invite the council, sorry, the council to evaluate that and get with. The Summit Creek developers with any other requests that would be helpful. Bob, to your point. Um, you know, if we think, hey, this would be helpful to get this information. I would bet they have that information. Uh, mostly at their fingertips and that they could get that out. Um, because Dave, I'm with you. The 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 best thing we could do is to do this in a way that doesn't fracture. Anybody and that helps the the rest of Woodland Hills to see. Uh, what Summit Creek is doing for the community and how it integrates and. Um, just educate and then we have a discussion and see where it goes. Um, let me get just a bit of clarification. I see where the, the public road and gate is a separate issue. But I see the private road and gate a- as tied into a single issue. I can't see. Summer Creek wanting private roads if they don't have the ability to put gates on them. I I don't. Maybe Bucky or Steve can can correct me, but I I see those as. As an issue. The primary issue is gates, the gated community, in order to have gates. Um. I I get, again, I guess if the city didn't want to. Uh, the city could have an ordinance that would allow gates on public road. Uh, or or allow them to be private and controlled solely by uh. By the HOA.
But it, Wayne, isn't it our current ordinance, um, it just, there's two separate that say there's no gates and there's no private roads. So. I guess they would, that in that sense, I guess that's why we would need to take them on separately, although they are very well connected.
And and we can do that. Uh, but I think the comments will come in as a. As a commonality with the private roads and the, and the gates. But but we can. You know, we can structure a public hearing in, in a way so that we try to get the information in a, in a way that will be helpful to. For the council to make uh, further decisions on things. Okay, thanks, Wayne. We need to uh, move on. Uh, but D- Dora, I I haven't heard from you. I think I have a, we have a sense of. How the other council members feel a- as far as Wayne's request that we include this as part of the uh, public uh, hearing. Um. On the third week of of, in March. Any concerns with that?
I I am, I very much support getting uh, getting Wayne, ha- having Wayne hold those public hearings as soon as possible and include. All those topics. I think the information we glean from our citizens, the earlier the better. So I support that.
Okay. And then, sorry, last question. Bucky and Steve, any concerns with uh, doing it the third week of March? From your perspective?
No, the sooner the better. We'd like good.
I think, and then. Uh, sorry, Buck. Um, yeah, I I think we'll coordinate with Jody and trying to get information out and. Uh, I I just encourage if, you know, if members of the city council have information that they think. You know, would be advantageous for us to to share with uh. The the residents as part of that or as part of the, you know. The introduction to the public hearing. Uh, if if you guys have got ideas there, we're, we're all ears and we'll try to share what we can. So.
You've always been really good about that. Okay, so Wayne, I think you, um, what I'm hearing, you've got your. Uh, marching orders on that one. Um, if, so go ahead and let's, let's put that on the uh, agenda for the third week of March. Okay, you know, I'm wondering as we're talking here if it would be appropriate for Glenn Anderson to uh, do up a, an article. Uh, with input from Summit Creek as to their uh. As to their views on it. And the city, I think, should take a a neutral view on it at this point in time. But maybe use that avenue to uh, to put the word out to citizens in a little bit more detail. Uh, just a thought, up to you.
I think it's a good thought, Wayne.
Yeah, Wayne, I'm not sure who 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 Glenn is, but have him reach out to me and I'm happy to. Provide whatever information he thinks is beneficial.
I'll do that. Steve, would you send me your email or or a. A way to text you and I'll get that to Glenn.
Yeah, uh, yeah, Bob, this has been, I'll, I'll, I'll send you that info.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, um, item number four, um, Planning Commission recommendation on rezoning of lots thirty-four, thirty-six, forty-three, and forty-seven. Wayne, we're still with you. Oh, boy. Okay. I think you have gotten, have you've received uh. The recommendation that we made at our Planning Commission meeting. Uh, pretty much adopting the word, the wording of the uh, Citizens Committee up there. Uh, maybe modifying it just a bit so that if there's other. Uh, mitigation properties around and the city wanted to put uh. Uh, a walking path up the side of them, they could, the city could do that. Uh, but uh, otherwise it pretty much followed the uh. Uh, the suggestion that was made. And this would be an add to. So it would be a, a city zone, a public facility zone. With a no trespass, with a mitigation, no trespassing overlay to include. And then the elements of that paragraph which uh, which I sent to you all. Uh, would be the uh, the added criteria for, for that particular zone. So that, that added. Voting was done by the Planning Commission and uh, received unanimous approval for, for that to be considered by the city council to adopt.
And Wayne. Wayne, since there were changes. To the proposed um. Mitigation or zoning, do you need another public hearing?
No.
Okay.
No.
I I would, at some point, I'd like to, uh, because I believe it's just a, a short paragraph or so. I'd like to have that read, uh, read in our meeting.
Okay, I think it's actually. Yes, it is in our business and discussion, so we will have that read.
Great, thank you.
Wait, the only comment I got from the mayor on this was there were, there was a reference to mitigation in in two locations on that paragraph. And her, her only concern was that if we're going to make this a a a general zoning categorization. Do we want to make it specific and and have the word mitigation? Because if you take those two um, references out. The sentence and the paragraph still makes sense. Instead of mitigation area, it becomes area, for example. But it's a little bit more generic so that it doesn't have to be tied to a mitigation. Uh, issue. Any thoughts or concerns with that? No, no, not really. It's kind of form over substance, really. The the facility zone is a mitigation zone, so if that's duplicitous in there and you want to kind of change that. I. I don't see a problem with it. Okay.
We, we will have multiple public facilities, right? We'll have.
Yes.
Two, one for art. And one for this and potentially others in the future.
Okay, correct.
And probably the same property where the salt shed is currently located. You know?
Yes, and our churches fall into that same category.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, a- any other comments? Wayne, Wayne, thanks for carrying the heavy load on this one. I think you might be off the hook now for a bit. Um. Um, number six, uh, city vehicle and equipment policy. Jody, you, you want to take that one?
Uh, sure. At the uh. During our January uh, meeting, comments were made. That it might be good to have a city uh, vehicle and equipment policy. This policy uh, was written with a few changes um, back in two thousand. Uh, right around two thousand and six, and it was part of our employee handbook. Uh. It has uh, since um. Probably needed to be updated a little bit. I know that there has been um, maybe some concerns. Uh, that we only are having the Public Works Director be responsible um. As I guess the head of um, over the equipment. But we are a growing city. We actually need to probably at some point. Decide who's going to be over the equipment. And it's not so much as you can't use it, but just um, so we. Know where our equipment is at all times and that it may, is maintained and in good shape.
Okay, thanks, Jody. Any comments, questions?
Agree.
I I agree too. I think it's important that we, we know where our city equipment is at all times. Um. We don't want to be caught in an emergency where our Public Works Director. Is looking around saying, where's the keys to, or where's this piece of equipment or or whatever. So if we have something that's consistent. On um, we have a lot of people who have access to the keys at this point and. And may use them all in good faith, uh, but it doesn't let us know necessarily where where they're at. And. And I think it's important that we know since we are paying for that equipment, plus paying for the maintenance of that equipment. So I agree and I am, I'm in favor.
So. There is a disclaimer at the top of that. Uh, thing we received about city equipment and, and it was regarding the fire department. And I. I I very much support the idea that the fire equipment is city equipment. But but I wondered if it was the intent of the document to. To use the same rules on our fire trucks. And and I defer to the chief a- on the answer to this, but. But there are things in there like, you know, you get three tickets in a year and you're like skedaddled out or whatever. There's, there's good ideas in there that that apply to the city equipment. And I just don't know, and I would want a clarification on how that document, how the rules in that document apply to the fire department. If at all, I don't know.
It's my understanding these rules would not apply to the fire department.
SOGs, they cover our equipment pretty good. Um.
That's what I was hoping, yeah.
I don't want to put so much stipulation on it that. Yeah. I mean, I'll, I'll look at it compared to the SOGs.
I mean, maybe there are things we might. Use in our SOGs that are in there. I think personally, I think it might be a smart idea to look at people's driving records, but. That's what Corbett's going to end up doing and and.
Yeah, we, we already pull driving records on about thirty-five people in the city that have. Access and that drive our city vehicles, mainly fire and EMS. It is a requirement. So anybody who's going to be driving our city equipment, volunteer or not, will need driver's license and there will be background check done by our. Um, insurance company and they send us a report once a month that only one person looks at to just determine if there's been any problems.
And. That is super good news. I'm just happy I'm not in cuffs. Thank you.
Well. That test.
Okay, that's.
Okay, any other comments on that issue?
I like it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, thanks, Jody. Uh, so events and city facilities use permit. And I can't remember who was going to talk about this, discuss this issue. Jody, is that you?
So the Parks and Recs uh, Recreation and Trail Committee suggested that we revise our. Permit. I looked at the one that they sent over and I don't see. Too many changes. I mean, Greg, maybe you could help me out of how this one differs from what we currently have.
Well, based on what I sent you, everything in red. Is a change. And in most cases, in addition to what was currently on the form. And uh. Se- several important, th- there's, there's several changes we made to, to make it more consistent with the, with the county. And with what other cities are doing. We also. Now require individuals to, to sign the form and and certify that they understand the. The, the terms and conditions, the rules of the city park. And um, they, they agree that they will forfeit the deposit. If, if there's damage or if the park is not left clean or. Those are the main, the main changes.
I looked over it and I thought it looked really good. Thank you, Greg, for, for doing that work. I I I think it is helpful for citizens to. To know what they're getting into, you know, and and to realize that we're, we're not restricting. We're just trying to make some consistent. Um, rules because it does cost uh, taxpayer dollars when we have to repair things or. And and not that it's done on purpose, but you know, there is that uh, possibility of damage to the park and we want to make sure that it stays nice for everyone. Now, was that included that there were no fires in the park? Just so for people who.
That's one of the park rules.
Yep. I just think we should reiterate that on the use permit. Um, because I have heard of people who say, oh, I'm just going to go, we're going to have a family barbecue at the park or. You know, we want to make sure that maybe that is, is um. Reiterated.
But I think it's also important that um. That that's consistent with our fire regulations. And here's what I mean by that. If they have an instant on fireplace, fire thing. And an instant off fire thing, those are legal. And I've seen them at the park. I don't have one, but I've seen them at the park, including. Uh, that little Christmas thing that they had um, just before uh, Christmas. So. I mean, again, you got to be careful when you're saying no fire because no fire means no fire, but we did it just before Christmas.
Well, that was, I, the, the fire chief gave special permission for that, I think, right, Craig? But I don't think that we want it to be a consistent um.
But so here's another question while.
That wasn't special consideration. That was following our open fire.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. What we should say in the permit is that you need to follow the fire regulations. We shouldn't. Come up with new regulations.
That's right, because it what, what, if what I'm hearing you, fire means then that you can't have a grill. Where you're cooking pancakes for breakfast that we see it quite often there. And so I think that the Dave's comment, that it's an instant on, instant off, a gas prov- a gas. Um. Propane type uh.
Motion detected in the front yard.
I think is legal and I think that's what Craig is implying also.
Yeah, liquid, liquid fuel, liquid fuel is allowed.
Yeah, so, so I think we just need to make sure that the, the write-up. Does not exclude. That, but includes that as a, as a clear condition of use.
Okay, um, I, I agree with that. I think that, that's all right. The one thing that I think that we need to then make sure of, I've seen people with the. Fire on off, uh, regulated gas and grills, but they put them under the, the. Um, pavilion. And I don't think that that should be, I I don't, I don't like that idea just in case there's an accident or something. I don't know. That's just my opinion. Um. But I, I don't know if that's something, Craig, that we have in our ordinance or if you can just have it anywhere. But to me, it seems like it'd be more of a fire danger to have that underneath.
Yeah, you're supposed to have a, you hit clearance of ten feet.
Um. So maybe that's what we just need to clarify. In, in that document, Greg, is, is okay, be in, in compliance with city ordinances. Which does not mean that you can have it underneath the pavilion. Because I did get some calls, I've gotten calls several times about. That worried uh, with residents who are worried.
But the, the, the pavilion's more than ten feet in the center.
Yeah.
I, I, I would just look to Craig to provide his guidance on that.
I think if it just follows like David said, if it just, if you just make, make sure that they follow the open flame per guidelines in our ordinances, then it's. It's pretty cut and dry.
Okay. Thanks, Greg.
Just make sure that we're not making up new stuff.
Okay. Please. A- any other comments?
Well, and I think it wasn't making up new things. It was just too separate because our current park rules say no fire. So with that, but then against our ordinances, which says you can have this, this um, open if it's propane and it's on off. So there was a, there was a discrepancy there. Um, from our park rules to our ordinance. So it's good to have that clarification.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, if not, let's move to Public Works Update. Uh, Corbett, are you, if Corbett's on, I think this is his baby.
Ben Con is over on. West Spring right now. They're almost to the, to the turn to go onto West Lakeview. Their contractor has already started installing the water service laterals. Up on Oak and they'll keep going until they're done.
Okay.
The laterals are. What's the timing between doing the laterals and actually connecting?
They're connecting the laterals as they go, one at a time. So as they install a lateral, they're disconnecting that house from the old main and tying them up to the new main.
Cool.
Okay, um, and. Okay, um and uh connectors against agreement with the Four Seasons and the church. Corbett, a- any updates on that, Corbett?
Uh a decision was made and amount was agreed on. Robert Nelson wrote the checks today for. Everything that he's responsible for now and everything that he's responsible for in the foreseeable future. Even though he doesn't have to pay that connector's agreement until he records or as part of his recordation requirements. He went ahead and paid everything that he owns the frontage for.
So as I, as a city council person, as part of that, I thought that it was a very uh productive. Um work group and everybody was working hard to make sure that. Uh everybody was being treated fairly. Um and so I I think it worked out very well. There was some confusion. At the beginning and in the middle, but it all got worked out okay like Corbett said, and so uh that basically is behind us now.
I agree.
And and I commend the crew that worked on that. That's been uh, it's been kind of a a struggled issue for some time now. Anyway, good job, you guys.
Yeah, well, it was important to to uh get it up on the table. Otherwise, it would have continued uh because there was, again, th- there was some different iterations of what was thought and what was understood and. And those all got worked out uh in a in a positive way.
Yep.
I I've got a question. I did receive a um a request to submit or to send a large check to Summit Creek. But uh Steve, are you still on that? Steve Dickert, if you're still on here, did everything, all your questions get worked out with regards to this? I've written this check about four times and I just want to make sure this time that it is, everybody's happy.
Chris, let me circle back with Buck after this meeting and then we'll try to get back to you this week and I'll let you know.
Excellent.
Hold on to it for a minute.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to update on city councils, uh city assignments, Doral, uh Parks, Trails and Rec and Public Safety.
Right. Could I invite Greg to update us on the Parks and Trails Committee? Thank you, Greg. You you're wearing a tie, that's why.
Well, don't don't think I'm trying to impress you. We have a temple cleaning assignment in about. It's not for you. Okay, um Parks, Trails and Recreation Committee, we um. We are currently in the process of applying for a a grant uh that would. Uh do some landscaping and uh put fencing in the park and various other things. And so we are, we are seeking partners. We've already, we've already acquired a number, number of partners. Uh nurseries and contractors, landscapers um around the area. Uh who can donate labor, in kind uh labor, equipment, uh materials. To to make this happen. Uh the grant deadline is March nineteenth, so we'd like to have. Uh i- if any of you know of of suppliers that might be able to provide providing kind services. And equipment uh materials, that would be, that would be wonderful. Love to, love to hear that. Um secondly, we will, our next meeting be. Uh reviewing and and looking at some avalanche warning systems. That could be put in place on the trail or at the trailhead and they could be as simple as a. As a wooden sign with a flap that says avalanche danger high, like we do for for fire. Uh in fact, it's a, it's a five, five point scale for avalanche. And if it's considerable or high or extreme, then we would move the needle or or flip the the sign. So so those are things that we're looking at and any any input or ideas that uh others may have, we'd. We'd like to like to hear those. But those are the really the two main things, I think.
Thank, thank you, Greg. And and I assume the next meeting's March third.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um on the public's, public safety front, if you're through, Greg, Greg. On the, on the public safety front, um we had a great meeting scheduled with Deputy Sean Peterson, which had to be. Uh canceled and I'm looking forward to that being scheduled again when time with him permits. Um so that's, that's a full update from our side of things.
Thanks, Doral. Doral, is that a, is that a Zoom meeting? So people, citizens can zoom into that meeting, Doral?
You know, I hadn't thought of Zooming it. We were gonna go meet in person. We all think we're cured, so. No, I'm, we we were gonna meet in person, but but I better take some some advice on that. The reason we were. Is it's a hands-on training with Sean at the city center. Um but but I'll sure take input from y'all on what we really ought to do.
Well, I wasn't sure what the essence of the meeting was. It was just kind of a information sharing meeting or if there's actual things that you're gonna be doing or.
It's to talk about, I think he wants to go over in detail this manual on Neighborhood Watch Program. And.
It's just a preliminary meeting, just to, just to kind of say, where are we and where do we want to get started and. No decisions made, but just a, just a preliminary meeting. He wanted to discuss a few ideas. And then um once we got formed, um similar to our other committees. Um you know, that had to have some preliminary meetings before they're actually formally formed.
But I wish to know that there was a Zoom link sent out for that meeting. It was not necessarily going to be everyone there in person.
Thank you, Jody. That's, that's perfect. Let's, let's do that again when he reschedules.
So I'm here if you guys, um the purpose of what I wanted to do was to try to get safety plans. In place for any type of disaster that occurred in Woodland Hills. Whether it's an earthquake, mudslide, you know, heaven forbid we have another fire. But just get it across all fronts so that if we do have some type of a natural disaster, everybody knows where to go, what to do. So that the the citizens are taken care of. I hope that clarifies it a little bit, but just get everything. Out in the open so that 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 I know what's going on and everybody's on the same page.
Appreciate that, Sean. I agree.
Okay, Doral, anything else?
Uh, no, we're good.
Okay, uh I'm up, looks like the Public Works Committee and Snow Removal Mark. Could you uh take take the Public Works Committee portion?
Sure, uh Paul did ask me to go ahead and kind of cover this for him tonight because he got kind of drafted to to. Uh lead the meeting tonight, so just, just a couple of items. Uh you know, we did at our last Public Works or Public Works Committee meeting, excuse me. Discuss a few items. One of them obviously was the the waterline project that uh Corbett is pretty much uh. Brought us up to speed on that, but the the big thing we discussed uh was, you know. Public Works Project coming into the next budget year, this year and the next budget year. And what uh kind of needed to be looked at and what uh, you know, what options are out there to try and prepare a budget for the council to take a look at. And your, the few of the things we discussed was the future waterline phasing, uh you know, phase two. You know, I won't go into your detail a lot of this, and we also talked about some auditing of the water rights, so you know, just to. How much can we spend each month or each year to to do that? Well, groundwater monitoring. Uh sewer operations was a, was a big one. Then also, uh we talked a little bit about water tank maintenance. Yeah, and and safety, and safety also included vehicle maintenance and storage and uh safety. Uh as far as vehicles are going up. Most of this, we think, uh can be worked into the general fund. I've been working with Corbett to try and get some budget numbers prepared so that we can take it to the uh, when I say we, the. That they can go to the Budget Committee and or the uh council for for the final budget this year. So we we do realize there's a lot of, a lot of needs for the city, but we did want to try and get some stuff presented and presented. To the council so that they have some uh information to help them make their decisions.
Thanks, Mark. And Mark, our next meeting is.
Second, I believe, the second of March, that Tuesday. Second, okay. So hopefully you'll have some, some numbers for that. Uh I know that I I've been talking with some of the uh. Some folks with the Utah Geological Survey on uh on well monitoring or your water monitoring and uh, you know, when you talk to a. Hydro, hydrogeologist scientist, you you don't get the short answer, but uh I I got, I got more information that I that I could probably dissect in about two weeks.
Yeah, that was, that was a a real point of emphasis. We were talking about how how do we, how do we make sure that we know trends on water levels? When we're sunk, you know, almost three hundred feet down with our wells, how do we know um and can a- and therefore. Be able to plan for um, you know, is it seven years of drought before we need to worry? How extensive? I mean, there was a lot of discussion about that, so we'll follow up with that and come with a proposal at some point to the, to the council on that issue. Um, anything else, Dave? Uh you were at the meeting, anything that Mark didn't discuss that we just, that we talked about?
I don't think so.
Okay. Uh, snow removal, it's being removed. Um I I don't know of any issues. Uh Bob, uh you you're on the, the crew. A- any issues that you're aware of that we ought to bring up?
We just need to have the snow come in on time. Stick around for a while and then leave, but don't come in and leave and in and leave, because that really adds to our budget. And consumption of salt and those kinds of things, so it's uh, we we just need to control the weather more, that's all.
Just as a citizen, I I have to say, I I had to drive out early, whatever day it was that we got a lot of snowfall. Um Woodland Hills was stellar. I mean, the roads were all clear. This was about six AM. Hit the roundabout and immediately ice. So. Anyway, again, you know, we just keep saying it over and over again, but our snowplow drivers are really, really good.
Yes.
And we are underrunning our budget for both labor and salt, if if uh I understood that correct from Dave Stone. Um and uh, yeah, in a twenty-four hour period, I spent about fifteen hours. Sixteen hours of driving.
Oh my goodness. Well, you'll appreciate this, Bob. I actually, this is uh uh in in all seriousness, I had a client. Who came up to Woodland Hills um right after a snowstorm and I met with them the next day and their question to me. Was how do you guys afford to keep heating elements under all of your roads? And I said, well, we don't. They said, well, how, wait, how are your roads always clear? I said, well, because we have really good drivers. So they were in all seriousness asking that question, so good job, guys.
Well, and honestly, it's a sad thing that we're underrunning our budget. We need to use our budget because we need the water.
That's right.
Yep. We need, okay, uh Carrie, you're up.
All right, um communication, uh we have, uh everybody should have received notice via email. As well as on social media, et cetera, that we are switching um part of our communications over to Everbridge. Which traditionally we have used only for our emergency um for uh communication. But we are switching all communication to that way, so um it's on our, it's on Facebook, it's on uh the website. And it's with an email to you all that um you need to go on to the Everbridge link, the. Utah dot alerts and um and either sign up every phone in your home or. To update the information that you had um put in previous. We have new categories, which will include. City Council agendas and and other things, so we will be um and you can sign up what you want to get and how you want to get it. There's um text, telephone call or email or all three you can choose, so that's uh something that we are going to. Um highly encourage you to do. Uh we will stop sending emails um as of uh March thirty-first. So uh we, yes.
I think it might be important for people to realize that what we are trying to fix. Are the communications and the email problems that we had back in the months of October and November.
Yes.
And the problem that was happening, which we did not know, is Jody was actually using. Her own email with email groups to send messages out. She was sending them. But our provider, because it exceeded the number of people that you're allowed to send to. Our provider was just kind of chopping it off, so some people would get the messages and some people weren't. So if you felt that inconsistency, that's the problem we're trying to fix.
Yes. Yep, and and to make it more consistent with um. So you can, as citizens, can pick what you want information on. Um there's also on our website is a. Um a video that Glenn Anderson put together on exactly step by step on. How to go about um updating your information or signing up, but we would like every phone in in the city to. Have that so that uh if you need, um especially for emergencies. Even if you don't want to hear about what we're doing at city council or you don't want to know about the bus schedules. Um or if you don't want to know about the road or water situations, we'll, all of those will be on there if you want them. But uh we do need you to sign up, especially for the emergencies. So with that, um. I have been at the Capitol since early, early this morning. I got home.
Before, before you leave that topic, I'm assuming if citizens, and I think there might be one or two that don't do. Anything to sign up per that link you gave us, do they default to everything or nothing?
They default to nothing, because we wouldn't be in that, we wouldn't have them in their, their contact information in the system. So it's a very.
We'll have them, we do have a lot of the citizens in when they come in. Uh and fill out the water application and citizens that have been here for a while, we've got all their information in and already uploaded to Everbridge. So I'm not sure if they don't do anything, they'll get what they're currently, they'll get everything. I believe it's the way it is gonna be.
If if you, if you've already signed up previous, you will continue with what you previously signed up for, but we have added new categories. And that's why we're saying, um please go in and update those categories because we will not be sending out any. Um any e- emails where we currently have done both. Now we're just going to do one, so. Most everyone who has come in since two thousand eighteen, when they um fill out their water, um. Like, like Chris said, with their water application, uh et cetera, they've signed up for a minimal amount. But people prior to that had to sign up for something right before the fires. We had a lot of people sign up for emergency only. But um we want them to update and also new people get new phone numbers um. Or they have in enough, a number of people who have now um we have phones in their house, so. Uh or have switched over to cell only, so we want to make sure that the information is is updated. And we will probably do update reminders every year about this time, just to say, okay, and just in case, you know. Looking over to make sure that we have what you want us to, to give you.
So new categories default yes or no?
Um, n- no, because uh you have to actually push the button that says, I want to know about roads. I want to know about weather. I want to know about um water. I want to know about the school bus, you know, or whatever. There's, there's quite a few categories that we've added now. We're modeling after some other cities in the county who have done this effectively. And we think that it will be um a better way to communicate because you will get what you want and in the way you want it.
Thank you.
So, um yeah, so today I went to the Capitol, I think at seven this morning. I got back five minutes before our meeting started. It was a long day, meeting with legislators. There's some, there's a lot of preemptive bills that are out there um that I think are. Are really harmful to to cities and so I met with lots of legislators today. And as a member of the league, there are certain things that are, that we're all, the cities are working on together. Um probably one of the most important would be HB eighty-two, which is the one I talked to you about the prior with um the ADUs. Uh that's on the four substitutes, so that sponsor has been listening to the city and has uh made some significant changes. Uh that most cities are now um okay with. It's not perfect, but it's okay. It's much better than the original one. Um basically, it's some partial zoning um preemptions. Um uh ADUs would be allowed in eighty-five percent. Of areas zoned residential in most cities and thirty-three in college towns. Um they would be required in um if it's a detached uh inspection license permit. It would have to be thirty-day plus lease, um off-site parking. Uh the appearance of the house on the outside cannot be unaltered, limits one per site. Um you can't have a separate meter, so it has to be a part of the house, has to be um. Um, let's see, egress windows, sept-. um, let's see, egress windows, septic, the septic tank has to be sufficient, building health and fire code compliance. Um, it may be denied if the lot is under six thousand square feet. Um, the city would not be able to re- regulate the percentage of the house or the number of rooms that would be allowed to be an ADU, but it does have to be, um, owner occupied. Um, the enforcement options at this point are, uh, tax lien or a fine. And it is only for long-term residents, not vacation rentals. That is some of the compromise that has been had. Um, mostly it's, um, there, it's the state's attempt to have affordable housing, especially in some of the larger cities where, um, older people now have basement apartments or mother-in-law apartments that, you know, they want to rent out to, to young families or college students or whatnot, but, um, they're feeling much better about, um, this bill at this time. One that I'm really concerned about, but today I found out it's in rules and I talked to every house member I could to say we are definitely opposed is HB ninety-eight, which is local government building regulation amendments. Um, basically, uh, it is a bill that says, um, if the city does not, um, comply with building permits in the fourteen days and inspections with the third, three days, that the builder can come in and hire their own independent, um, inspector, or it can be themselves. Um, and preempt, um, city. And, uh, we were, um, much against this. Um, it looks like, um, this will go to rules and, uh, might, uh, die there. But we will need to be working with that sponsor so that it does not come back or that, uh, we can show that we are responsible at cities, that we are not trying to, um, hurt the development or prohibit, uh, building, but that we're trying to, um, comply with the statute that already is of the fourteen days for a building permit and, and three days for inspection. As law, we as a city can hire our own independent, um, inspector if we need to. But, um, we don't necessarily feel that it's right that the contractor gets to preempt the city and hire their own. So that one is, is still a work in progress and that we oppose that. Um, there's some affordable housing things that are going on, uh, right now. Uh, one sixty-four is one that we currently oppose there. It's, um, it's one that they're trying to do exclusionary zoning, um, and the city, I mean, there's just a whole bunch of things right there with fees and the ability to, um, in cities to, to help figure out what is affordable housing. Now, in Woodland Hills, we're kind of, uh, we're different than other cities and yet at the same time, these regulations kind of are blanket for every city and that's part of what we're, we're trying to do now. There hasn't been an update on that one since, uh, the sixteenth of February. So right now with the legislative session ending next week, uh, if bills aren't coming out of rules in the next one or two days, there's a very good chance that they're not coming out. There's two bills with regards to, um, billboards. Now, although this might not apply to us because we don't have any billboards, um, it's saying that if you have a billboard in, or a large sign in your city limits, it can be turned to an electrical sign. And then if yet one person has one, then the next person can also have one. And so, or if their neighboring city, if Salem suddenly let something be across the street from us and they allowed large signs, it could be electric and be fine. And so we are, uh, not in favor of that either. Um, one that just came out yesterday that, so we oppose, I talked to the sponsor today, which is, is Senate Bill two twenty-one of short-term rentals. It is basically saying a municipality may not enforce an ordinance prohibiting, prohibiting short-term rentals if the owner of the short-term rental occupies that rental structure. Now, we have already said that in our city, we do not want short-term rentals. This bill would over, overshadow that and allow for short-term rentals. Um, and the municipality may not use the tax revenue to, uh, to rent a short-term rental that is offered on a short-term rental website for purpose of enforcement of an ordinance, meaning that we couldn't, we couldn't, um, prohibit that. And it, uh, it really undermines the compromise that we had in two thousand seventeen on House Bill eighty-two, which was the affordable housing, um, bill of that year. And that gave us the right to say, we do not want a short-term rental. There are many cities who either want to limit it to certain sections of their sound town, or like us prohibit them altogether. So we are going to be adamantly supposing that, opposing that. Um, let me see, there's a couple of others, um, HB three sixty-four is the Utah Lake Authority. Uh, we've been working with the sponsor quite heavily on that. Uh, there's a lot to do, not just with the lake. Sometimes people look at it and just see it as a recreation, but there's a lot of water rights that are involved with that. Although we have our own water, it does affect the water around us, which we, we do have a say and an impact on that. Um, there's a, quite a few law enforcement bills. Uh, we don't have our own law enforcement, but we do contract with the Utah County Sheriff's Office and there are a lot of, um, law enforcement bills that, um, would put some price and some budget impacts to municipalities. One that we are opposing is getting away with the immunities. Our law enforcement has some immunity at this point. Um, when they're, um, involved in different incidents and, uh, that puts, uh, some of those bonds and, and things on the cities that employ, uh, law enforcement. So we are opposing that. There's several others that have to do with, um, some fee structures and other things that are coming up that, um, I will be keeping my eye on and, uh, continuing to meet daily with our own representatives, both in the House and the Senate, and then with, um, leadership and others. So if any of you have concerns about a particular bill, please let me know and, and I will get those on the radar right away and, and talk with the sp- the sponsors as well. If there's any questions, please let me know.
Thanks, Carrie. Okay, Bob, volunteer projects and community events.
We have a few items that we're, uh, looking into, but we're not anywhere near being able to, uh, start talking about them in public. So we'll, we'll get back with you later.
Thanks, Bob. Uh, Dave?
So I feel like, um, we've kind of covered the planning commission tonight. So if no one is offended, I, I'll just kind of skip over planning commission. Um, as far as finance committee, finance committee met earlier this month, um, we've actually had one of our finance committee members. Um, I'm looking for him now. Uh, looks like he may have dropped off, but anyway, um, he was on and, uh, appreciate his time and efforts. So what the finance committee has been working on is they've been working with each of the different departments on kind of their big priority asks for this next budget season. It is budget season coming up, um, shortly. What we're really hoping is that we're, um, we've, uh, kind of developed enough, uh, budget knowledge that we, uh, can maybe be a little quicker with our budget this year. And instead of thinking in terms of every single line item, we think in terms of like, what are the top three things that the city really needs to focus on this next year? The good news is we have mitigation behind us, so we don't have that big, um, price tag. Um, I will remind everyone on the council that last year we slashed our fire department, um, saving for a new fire truck. Um, we slashed a lot of money. Um, well, really a lot of money from the fire department. We slashed some money from some other places. And so, um, those are some areas that we need to look at really heavily as we, as we go into this next budget season. Um, from a water perspective, um, we have taken on, um, a fair amount of debt that's going to have to, um, be repaid. So even though we have water funds, um, they're largely going to service um, the debt for the new pipeline. The finance committee is also looking at what we're calling phase two, even though we know that it might be phase two, phase three, phase four for the water project. And so they're, um, looking at some financing with the Utah Rural Water Association um, to perform those other areas. Um, in addition, um, so we've talked about fire truck, we've talked about water. And then the third area that's kind of a big area is, um, the public workspace. Um, this has been kind of a three-year-long, um, priority that has not gotten funded for three years. Um, we have equipment that's no longer able to be sheltered. Um, when we're cleaning off our, uh, our plows, we're having to do that outside, which means that it gets icy on the, on the ground and we've had some accidents with that. So anyway, we've got it. Um, we have priorities sufficient that we don't need to come up with additional priorities this year. Um, and it's again, going to be a very tight budget year. So there you go.
So David, I have a question. So are they ready to, to give us this information so that we can schedule our budget retreat? Because I think that we need to have that scheduled here, um, very quickly in, in March. I would like to have it in March so that we aren't pressed for time by the ti- uh, by the time we need to have our public hearings and everything else with regards to our budget. So when would that?
Let me remind everyone of what the budget process is supposed to be.
Right.
The budget retreat was really something that, um, Mayor Prey started. Um, as, uh, an attempt to, um, educate the council. I would remind everyone, it is not required for us to have budget retreat. Um,
Nearly, just with that, with that said, nearly every city has one and most cities had theirs in January at the beginning of the, the year prior. They meet prior to, to the process to discuss it. And then the mayor, of course, with, uh, help of, we have our finance committee, then compile something to give to the council to go forward. Um, but I think that it's helpful when we have a budget retreat just to be able to make sure that we're all on the, the same page about some of those things. So.
Yeah. So let me get back to where I was. So it's not required for us to have a budget retreat. The reason other cities do it is they have many, many departments. We, we don't have so many departments. Um, and we really only have a few full-time employees. But what the finance committee has been doing is gathering from them, kind of their big priorities. And then yes, the finance committee is going to come. And the idea is that they will give the, they will give the, the summary of that to the mayor. Um, and at the same time, give it to the council. Now, whether the mayor chooses to then, um, have a budget retreat where we can talk about each of those items individually, that's up to the mayor. And then it's also up to the mayor to actually put together the budget, um, in conjunction with Chris and then present that to the council for our review. Review and either rejection or approval. So that's what the budget process is supposed to be.
I'm, I'm really interested in what you just said. The finance committee have, they have heard from our departments, as you mentioned, and their report, you said, will go to the na- to the mayor, but not necessarily to us?
Well, I, I think it can go to all of us. And again, I'm all for, I mean, it's public information. So it should be, you know, made public and it should be, um, as open as, as it can be. But I guess what I'm trying to point out is that it really is the mayor's responsibility to come up with a budget. And then present that to the council for our approval or rejection. That's the process.
Okay.
Yes, I, I, I agree with that. I would like to see the report or whatever they're planning on giving to, to the mayor. I think that would be important for this, for us.
Budget cycle, we've had a finance committee and so I'm really looking forward to, they've heard everybody's wants and needs and pleadings, and I'm very interested in their input.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm anxious to see it too. And, and one of the things I told Chris is, um, we need to take a look at the, you know, the things that we, that we really sliced last year. I don't think the residents are aware of just how deeply we had to cut some really critical areas. Um, and when I say critical, I'm not talking about things that we would like to have, you know? These are, these are like, what we, what we cut were things where we were saving so that in the future, we wouldn't have to spend a whole lot of money to get a fire truck. I mean, we were trying to save for that so that we would be ahead of the game and we didn't do that last year. So those are some areas that we need to try and restore that funding so that we can be ahead of the game.
Thank you.
So as a council, since the mayor's not here, are we just going to wait? I mean, um, to decide on when we might have a budget retreat or if we are going to have a budget retreat, we're just going to wait. When are they, when is the finance committee going to be giving their, um, report to her? So that she will know what direction she's going with, or maybe Chris knows. Chris, do you have an, any idea on that? I'd just like to get it organized and planned so that we all, because it is hard to have us all available on another day separate from council meeting. So I would like to schedule it if possible, far enough in advance.
So the, I have all the documents in my possession. The finance committee's asked me to put together the first draft of a budget, just with everybody's wish list at this point. And then in our next finance committee meeting, they will be reviewing those things and then making a report or presentation to the mayor. Is that right? That's my understanding, Dave.
Yeah.
Can they make a report to the council as well, or does that premature, Chris?
That'd be premature. The mayor then has her look through it to make any changes before she gives it to the council.
And she just texted us and plans a meeting in March, so she's on top of this.
Wonderful.
Yeah, and the next, the, the meeting that the finance committee is going to be doing this is on March tenth, just to give you a timeline.
Okay. Sure appreciate their work, David. That was, they're a good group.
They are really, really helpful.
Yes.
Super smart and they, they really delve down into areas that, um, I mean, we tried to in the last budget meeting and I, or the last budget retreat that we did, but it took us a complete Saturday and that was a lot of work. Um, so hopefully they're doing that legwork ahead of time and, um, it'll hopefully make for a smoother budget process.
Great. Thanks, Dave. Um, Mayor Prey's last, um, um, since she's not with us, we can remove that to next time. Um, and with that, I think that comes to that, to bring this to the end of our work session. Any, anything to bring up before we, we close the work session and take a five-minute break? Great. Okay, so it is eight twelve right now. Let's maybe come back at, uh, eight seventeen. How's that? Five minutes? All right. See you then. In all his glory.
Yep.
Well, there are twenty-six brave souls or mentally unstable people, depending on your perspective, that are still with us. So that's great. Um, okay, well, let's go ahead and call the, uh, meeting back to order. This is the city council meeting, um, scheduled for February twenty-third, Tuesday. It is eight eighteen right now. We're just about twenty-three minutes, um, over where we should be time-wise. That's not too bad. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. Again, excuse Mayor Prey, um, and ask, uh, Carrie, can you do the, uh, pledge of allegiance for us? Are you muted?
Yep. Um, can everyone else make sure that they're muted?
Yes.
So that we can, uh, and who has a flag? I forgot to, to bring one in here.
Bob's got one right behind his head. Oh, and Dora does too.
Oh, perfect. So if everybody can, uh, please rise and, uh, repeat after me, muted in your own home, that would be perfect. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Carrie. And looks like I've got the invocation. Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity. We have to meet this evening. We're grateful for the Great council that we've received thus far from our citizens and from our city council members and leaders. We ask thy spirit to be with us now as we move to this to make decisions for our city, this part of the meeting that we can Have exercise good judgment, that we can listen to the opinions of those around us and Consider their needs. We're grateful for the community that we live in, for the people that we live with. Grateful for the protection we received and the recent snow we received and ask that we can receive more Moisture as we need it for the coming year. Again, grateful for all that we have and ask that we can always look out for one another. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Okay, so consent agenda. I know that If I remember right, Jody, I think you got those out yesterday a little bit late. Is that right?
That is correct.
January 12th, because everyone had a chance to review those yet. I have not. I was going to when I got home, but then Had these this come up. So I was busy reviewing other things. So is anyone else reviewed?
Yep, I reviewed them.
And I got Doral's. He suggested a couple just grammar changes. And so we got those taken care of.
Okay, Dave, anything you would have to add?
No. I'm I'm not a very good grammar checker, so the content looked fine.
Okay.
How about shorter minutes?
I I was fine. I I too, I didn't really, I didn't check for grammar. Sorry, I know Wendy usually does that. So I I just look for content.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then if anyone wants to move to.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent consent agenda, although We've got here approval of job descriptions. Can we strike that?
Yes, let's strike that. Wendy said she's not ready for that yet.
Okay, I will make a motion that we approve item number one of the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, had a The motion made by council member Pratt and seconded by council member Kristen. All those in favor, just because it's hard to hear, but at the same time, let's go one by one. Bob?
Yes.
Doral?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Or me, yep. Okay.
Paul, I don't know if it was an oversight on your part, but we skipped public comment for the
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're absolutely right. Yes, that was an oversight on my part. And I do have those Additional comments to read. So let me open up to anybody. Is there any public comment other than those statements I will be reading from The fuges? Any other public comments?
I believe that Mylan Malkovich wished to make a public comment.
Okay, Mylan, go ahead. Are you there, Mylan? Okay.
Carrie, you want to ask him to unmute himself?
He's not with me, so I don't know how if he knows how to unmute himself on his phone.
I'm not sure he's there.
He his phone number is there.
His phone number is here, but I can't. I keep asking him to unmute.
Yeah, I don't know.
Bottom left hand corner, Mylan says mute.
He says he's unmuted, but it's not. He's going to bring his phone to me. He's just gonna talk on mine.
It might be working. I'm getting that that feedback.
He's just gonna talk on mine.
All right.
Hey, thank you. Sorry, I'm a little out of breath from running up the stairs. Yeah, so things unfolded rather rapidly today. While I was traveling. And so I do appreciate. Excuse me, I'm out of breath. I do appreciate The sizable check that the city received on the church's behalf today On the connectors agreement. I do appreciate Robert Nelson's good faith in Writing that check and appreciate Bob And his help in the last couple of weeks and and Brian Gabler. I do, I'm a little confused. And I'm not sure I understand All the amounts that I saw in an earlier email today. And we still do need to follow through. I just wanted to clarify. We do need to follow through the even though that was a sizable check, it's still only about half Of the money that the church anticipates a reimbursement agreement on With the other property owners. And so we do need to clarify that. And I believe Brian will probably weigh in on this in response to my email, but We do need to follow through on the Connectors reimbursement agreement with the other property owners. And and then we just need to make sure that we dot the i's and cross the t's On the church's behalf, because Even though I'm a church employee and I'm given certain authorities. We have accountants and Auditors and attorneys that all need to You know, have a detailed accounting and everything that we do.
Yes, you do.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate getting to this point. And thank you once again for all your support with that. And Bob, thank you. Appreciate your refereeing that. It's kind of like making sausage, right? But
Yeah, not a problem at all. Just kind of clarify what what Mylan said there is that that there are Landowners on the other side, 11 200 That owe Some of this fees. We don't have a real firm way of collecting it from them. It's just whether or not their integrity and that type of thing will permit that. And so we have to figure out how to Appropriately assess them and hopefully recoup Those benefits that they received by the water being put in.
Thank you. And and we have to comply with the ordinance, basically. You know, for on the city's behalf and the church's behalf. So Thank you so much for all your help. And well, you guys got more patience than I do. So Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mylan.
You bet.
We have a mute button.
Okay, any other public comments?
Paul, don't forget to read the public comments that were submitted by Tannen and Megan Future.
Yep, I will do that right now. Okay, so the first comment that says during a recent city council discussion of title 10 zoning city zoning ordinances, the mayor stated Just for clarification, the city council can always create a variance for any reason that they choose just Dot, 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 I'm just making this clear. So the variance committee is really restricted by pretty Dot, 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 dot strict guidelines and rules. But the city council can choose for whatever reason to dot, 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 ignore Any like ordinance or whatever. You know, the city council just has that power to change an ordinance or variant ordinance. And so somebody could still come to the council, but I think it's wise to not have that written into the ordinance. But people just need to recognize the city, the the council always, the full council always Has power, has the power to disregard city ordinance, which is interesting, but true, end quote. She was then asked whether where this is found. She replied, quote, dot, 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 that is state statute. That's how city councils are structured, dot, dot, dot. And I I mean, I don't think that's a good, you know, thing to Live by necessarily, but I just want everybody to be clear on that. As we're passing this tonight, a future city council could always create a variance. It can happen, end quote. Thus, according to the mayor's own public claim, there is a state statute stating, one, The city council can always create a variance for any reason they choose. Two, The city council can choose for whatever reason to ignore any ordinance. Three, The full city council has the power to disregard city ordinance. I respectfully ask the mayor to please provide the citizens with the say with the code citation Of the Utah state statute by to which she was referring. What is that state statute submitted by Dr. Tannen Fugia? Second public comment. We we have repeatedly invited and continue to invite the appropriate city official to work with us to mediate a resolution To the pending issues against the city of Woodland Hills. It is now abundantly clear that the city has made many errors in allowing this the construction at 1115 South Woodland Hills Drive to deviate from approved plans and to violate mandatory land use regulations. The city has received and never fully investigated stamped and signed engineering reports From licensed engineering professionals clearly identifying multiple safety violation With that construction. The city has willfully failed to act and has And has parentheses with clear knowledge of real potential damage injury and irreparable harm to us and parentheses Allowed occupancy of that structure. Regardless of whether the city is able to leverage legal loopholes to get out of taking responsibility for their errors, the safety risks Will remain. We will continue to shine a brighter light on Woodland Hills and the actions of the city. The city can choose to expend precious city financial resources In an effort to avoid responsibility or the city can do the right and prudent thing and mediate a resolution. As Mr. Church, previous city attorney, has clearly expressed The city will not sit down without attorneys to mediate anything. The current city attorneys continue to grasp at legal loopholes. The simple fact remains, the city has made mistakes. It is time for the city to humbly take responsibility and resolve the matter for the good of the city and the healing of community relations. Respectfully, Megan Fugia. So those are the two public comments that were made and they asked that they be read out loud. Any other public comments? Okay, thanks for reminding me of that, Jody. Okay, so let's move then. We we so on the consent agenda, we approved the January 12 2021 city council minutes. Day and I discussed and 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 the mayor asked that we table the second, the approval of job descriptions. Does anybody have a concern if we if we table that second item until she's able to get that work done and heal a little bit?
No, special heel part.
Okay. Vision business and discussion. The first item for just business and discussion is a city code title 11 subdivision ordinance. Any discussions, any motions?
I'd like to make a motion That we approve title 11 As it has been posted With a modification to re add in the Section 109 dot, I want to say seven. I want to make sure and get that right, though. That we add back in basically the the hillside development And that we remove the sentence that Steve Diggert brought up in 1152D that specifies The No. Sorry, I've actually got it up here on one of my pages. No, no private roads and no and no gates on public roads.
Okay, so we've got a motion.
Removing that one and adding this hillside development.
So I have a question.
Sure.
So as pointed out by some of the the emails that we've received, there are two locations Where hillside development is located. Is that correct?
There not now.
There were.
Okay.
It was in two different places. Then it got moved to the development construction standards. We're now moving it back into title 11, or that's what the motion states.
Okay, so there's only one hillside development. Okay, thank you.
So I just want to clarify. So approving title 11 as posted, but amending it to include 109.7 hillside development and removing 1152D On the private roads slash gates.
Right.
Okay, I'll second that.
Paul's gone quiet while muted.
Paul's muted. I'm sorry, I muted myself. Okay, I'm sorry. We have. We've got a motion and a second. So let's do a roll call vote on this one. Unless there are any other discussion points. Dave, you you go first.
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Doral?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And I would vote yes on that as well. Thank you. Okay, second item. City code title 12. Any discussions, any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve title 12. Sorry, I'll wait for discussion.
Unless you have some discussion, Dave.
Well, the only discussion I'll have is so I read through all of The document that was sent to us by the planning commission. There were How do I want to say this? There were a lot of comments in that document, which that's kind of a A problem that we've had. You know, it's a bit of a chicken and egg thing, right? What we have to do is we have to make comments, put them in the document, send them to American Legal Publishing. Have American Legal Publishing, you know, do their codification magic, which puts it into a single PDF With all of those changes. And then it comes back to us. And then we can then review it and make sure that they got what we anticipated that they got. I I just want the citizens to know that That's the process. That's how it works. And I don't know that there's a better way or Anyway, there's not a whole lot we can do about it. So anyway, I approve title 12 With the amendments that are in the draft in the document that was sent to us by the planning commission. That's and then what we're going to need to do is make sure and manage that that we get all of those changes that were put in there.
Thanks for that clarification, Dave. Any comments, questions? You've got a motion unseconded at this point.
Just ask, Dave, what's What's wrong with the procedure of getting the final Back and then voting on it?
Yeah, that's a great question. The biggest, the biggest problem at this stage of the ballgame Is that American Legal has basically said they're not going to give us another one, just so that we can make more comments And do the back and forth game. So it's it's the fact that we have drug this out so far That American Legal said no more. That's the real problem. Now, Are they will? Are they willing to do changes once we adopt it? Yes, they are. And we will then pay a per page fee as we make those changes. But again, you know, that's going to happen anyway as we make changes to our ordinances. So we knew about that, but American Legal is just saying no more free work. We have to do it. We have to adopt it. And then they're willing to Give us the final copies. And then any changes from that point on will will be done on a per page Cost basis.
I've got a
Your opinion?
Was that to me, Doral?
No, it was. It was a question to Paul, getting his opinion about the procedure we're doing this by.
No, I I think Dave's right. I mean, It is a little bit chicken in the egg in the sense that we give stuff back to American Legal. And do we give it to them? I mean, is it? Is it? Is it passed? Or is it just Conjecture? I mean, what what is it that we're giving back to them? And then they tweak it and go back and forth. At some point, some it has to stop moving and somebody has to say, okay, that's where we're going to start. And then we can make changes from there. My question, Wayne, to you is, were there any Of the public comments that expressed concerns that you feel like were not resolved on title 12?
No, we got really very few, if any, comments on title 12. Probably because a lack of citizens' understanding of what it was. It's really, it doesn't involve them directly. So there was really no vesting that the citizens have in it. It's the city issue. Uh, it's the city issue primarily. So, um, I, I think the changes that are, that we're recommending from the maybe a final draft that we got are, they're not really substantive changes, they're, they're title changes maybe and that sort of thing. So I don't see those things as making any really critical difference in the, in a final draft from what we're asking now. Uh, if it's approved, American Legal to, to, uh, put together for the city. And if they make a mistake, then we can obviously go back to them and say, hey, that we, this was a comment and you didn't properly address that comment. So we, I believe, Dave, we still have that option with them to get a final document.
Yeah, I'm just pointing out that we're going to need to do that, that step. So after we get back the supposed final document, we're going to need to compare it against all of our comments and make sure they got it all.
And remember too, that our, our, our ordinances in our, our city documents are basically living documents. They can be amended, they can be changed, they can be, we can get rid of them, we can add new. I mean, that's an ongoing process that happens all the time and the codification is just the stopping of, of one moment of time. So if something is taken out, it doesn't mean that we can't put it back in later or change it or whatever. It just is that there, there's a cost to that based on per page, but, um, but at least we have the, most of the complete document as we have been approving it, codified at the same time, then the additions to that just come in, in more in pieces at the time. And then we, in a few years, we codify again. And so it's an ongoing process, but it's something that I think we do need to, for the sake of, of the company we're working with, we need to have that in date, as, as was said.
And I will be sending a gift card for a very nice restaurant to whoever is in charge of this the next time.
Senator, there's an excellent, excellent Scottish restaurant, Dave, called McDonald's. Excellent.
Well, and hopefully we've learned some things, um, through this process. This is the first time that we've ever done this and we're a forty-year-old city. And so our town slash city, and so I think it's important to note that this is part of a growing, you know, maybe growing pains and, but now that we have it kind of under our belt, we can continue building on the foundation that we have now, so it's maybe not so difficult going forward.
Good point. So again, we've got a motion and that's it.
I'll second it.
All right, Bob? That's whenever Otley has seconded that, so a, any other discussions or questions before we call a vote? Okay, again, let's do a roll call vote. Start with Bob.
Yes.
Doral?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And for myself, yes. Okay, pass you now, let's see. Okay, number three, ordinance adopting rezone of lots 34, 36, 43, and 47. Comments, questions, motions?
I move that we adopt, uh, um, the ordinance adopting the rezone of lots 34, 36, 43, and 47 as outlined earlier by the planning commission, uh, Wayne Franson.
I would like to have the, uh, the, the, uh, it read, so we know exactly what we're voting on and then see what, where we go from there.
Okay.
I've got the wording here, if you want me to read it.
Wayne, go ahead.
Um, just Wayne.
Sure.
I'd like to make sure that we're reading the version that Jody sent.
Better have Jody read it then.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I actually have some concerns about it.
Okay.
They're not huge, they're just teeny, but I, anyway. But let's go ahead and read it.
Jody, can you?
Okay, so whereas the proposed zone change has been referred to the city of Woodland Hills Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration in accordance with Utah Code Annointed 10-9A-501, whereas public, uh, whereas a public hearing was held before the city of Woodland Hills Planning and Zoning Commission on December 10th, 2020, where public input was received, and whereas a public hearing was held before the city of Woodland Hills Council on January 12th, 2021, where additional public input was received. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Woodland Hills. Section 1, said property described as lots 34, 36, 43, and 47 in plat B of Thousand Oaks, currently classified as Zone R2B PUD is hereby classified as public facility with a mitigation and no trespassing overlay. Further described as stated herein, no structures will be built on the property and only city-approved access is allowed to maintain, operate, and beautify the area and to install and maintain a split rail fence done to protect the property. Also, a not to exceed fifteen-foot-wide soft surface walking path, not subject to no trespassing or city approval to use, may be constructed between the fencing and roadside outside of any fence line that encloses the mitigation area as long as it does not interfere with the intended purpose of the mitigation work. Section 2, the Woodland Hills City zoning map is hereby amended by the rezoning of said property adopted by the city council of Woodland Hills this 23rd day of February 2021. It has been suggested by, uh, council member Pratt that we take out the word in order to make this, um, ordinance in the zone classification be able to be, be used in the future, that we possibly remove, maintain a split rail fence and instead put the wording in, maintain a, uh, fence that follows, um, current city code.
Uh, doesn't the city, city code allow fences?
My, no, no, no. My concern was, I just felt like split rail was so specific. So what I'd really like to see there is just, um, maintain a, a fence and if we want to use wording that's a little more like, that fits in with the natural surroundings or is eighty percent made of natural materials or, you know, something like that, but to say split rail, I just feel like it ties our hands to only one type, which we may come down the road and we may decide, well, split rail didn't work for whatever reason, and so it should be instead a, um, you know, a, a, maybe a pressure-treated wood fence or something like that, but I just, I was concerned about how specific that wording was.
Can I comment?
Yeah.
Um, I, I too thought it might be better to have it more generic, and I talked to John Wallace about that, and his group was pretty adamant that they wanted split rail fence stated in there. That's what they had decided on and they didn't, and the purpose was they didn't want the city to be able to come back and put something in there that, that in their view was not, uh, conducive to the surrounding up there. Now that was their view on it, so I just share that with you.
And, and I will add to that, Wayne, in that I have been receiving texts this evening from the group. And, uh, they would like it to stay split red-fet-rilled fence. They would like it to be, um, challenging for the city to, to make changes. And so, uh, the group, the most affected group, uh, would like it to stay with a split rail fence.
The other thing I want to make sure that we're not doing just with this ordinance is that we're tying our budget and forcing us into a budgetary decision with a zoning decision.
Well, we've already, um, I think that if you, if you listen to what, uh, Greg Wood talked about, uh, that's pretty well taken care of. Um, and the, the most affected citizens have, uh, made commitments, not of specific dollar values, but of, uh, making, uh, contributions for the in-kind portion of, of this bit, split rail fence. And so, um, that, that's, that's their point. And, and the, and the, the, you know, we've already, uh, received an estimate, uh, back last year on how much this would cost. And, um, it was ten or eleven thousand dollars for all of it. That included matching the split rail fence that is already in the park, around the front of the park and along the mitigation. So it's not just mitigation, it is, uh, finishing up what was started some time ago.
Okay, which, just for, that's not a split rail fence.
The, along the, in the parking there?
Yeah.
Um, that's the fence they're going to copy.
Okay, but that's not a split rail fence, I'm just saying.
Well.
I've built split rail fences and that is not it.
There's multiple versions of split rail fences. And so, uh, one of the reasons why we chose that kind is because of the request that the city employees had, that they wanted it to be as much maintenance-free as they could. And so the, the ones that you just stack and that type of thing, um, we agree that that would be high maintenance, and so we, we didn't want that to burden the city.
Okay, as long as you agree that that's the definition of a split rail fence. I will.
And, and that's, that's kind of semantics and so, yeah, I'm okay with that. So, so let, let, let me just kind of back up here a little bit and, and, and give, uh, kind of an overview of what I feel like we're kind of in there. Um, so, well, you know, we, we had the fire, we now need to do some things for mitigation. It wasn't planned for mitigation, so we shoehorned into a residential community, uh, the, uh, mitigation. Yeah, it was forced to fit, it just barely fit. And so we are where we are. Uh, tho- those citizens, um, that are most affected have lived for some, for two years with sandbags or steel barrier or cement barriers in front of their homes. And have been burdened significantly for the benefit of the community. Uh, in other words, we've taken one for the team. Uh, what we are now asking is that we, and some people have called it this, is that we're shoehorning a zoning code to be very specific to, to that mitigation. And we as concerned citizens that are most affected said, are saying, so what? Let it be shoehorned, because we've been shoehorned for two-plus years. And so that's what our request is, that's what we've worked towards. And that's what, uh, we agreed to, uh, through John, um, prior to the, uh, planning commission voting on it, and we would just like to stay true to that agreement.
Any comments, concerns, questions, motions?
I, I did. I, I made a motion, but I don't know.
I didn't hear read the phrases that were contributed by your neighborhood, Bob. Did I miss that somewhere?
Well, I, I, I'm not sure, I don't have them right in front of me, but I don't remember hearing the, the two different mitigations that were in there that I think were changed since.
Well, they didn't want, uh, stuff built there, stuff parked there, stuff, you know. There was, there was some detail in a few add-on lines from, from the group.
Yeah, the only thing that was taken out was, um, from what, uh, Commissioner Franson said, sent over was the word mitigate, where it says access is allowed to maintain, operate, and beautify the area. So we took out mitigation.
Okay.
And then the only other area, um, was a split rail fence done to protect the property we removed then to ensure it complies with any mitigation agreements. Those were the two things that Mayor Prey asked that be removed, just to make it more concise. Otherwise, the rest remained the same as what, uh, Commissioner Franson said over.
So, uh, John's here and he can speak for himself, but I think that where we are is that we would res- respectfully request that it, uh, stay the same as it came over from, from, uh, Wayne. And John's asking to have it read again, please.
Sorry, I'm just coming back from Southern Utah, just driving up the hill listening. That's why I popped into Bob's house instead of my own.
So John, if you, uh, pull up council member Ottley's 20, uh, 21-07 ordinance, you will be able to see right on the page where it says now therefore be it ordained, the wording.
Cause I don't know if you got my email on Friday, Jody, I was trying to get that in advance to look at.
Um, I, what I could do right now is just.
Yeah, I can see it here with Bob, so give me just a sec.
What, is it, it's, uh?
That was it, I think.
Is that it? I thought that was hillside.
And Dave, are you there?
Yeah.
I'd be okay if it said split rail or similar, that would give some latitude with that. I, I don't think the, our, the committee would have an issue with that.
Yeah.
We're not so.
What I, what I.
That exact fence had to be there. Biggest concern we had, we didn't want chain link for sure, we didn't want chain link with bar, with barbed wire, like what's up at the water tank.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, I mean, you want it to look natural.
Yeah, split rail and/or natural or some of the blend, I'd be okay with that verbiage, I think the committee would. We were not so set on that exact fence as much as we wanted it to look good in the area. And, and did not want chain link.
Yeah, no, I, I totally get that and would never propose chain link. I, I was just, again, I was just kind of proposing that it be a little more.
Yeah, I, it could be a two-rail, three, I, I'm not, we're not that picky, I think we just want it to be somewhat natural. Obviously, lower maintenance is better, pressure treated, which I heard you say when I was driving up the hill. Uh, pressure treated to be a lower maintenance than safe cedar, for instance. Um, so yeah, I, I think, you know, there's some latitude there. So it says to maintain a split rail fence, I think you could add it and/or, um, and/or similar. I mean, that gives you some latitude, it really does, so.
Some, similar look and feel.
Yeah, similar, I already want to add it, but yeah, so. That, that's, that's my only input, sorry, I decided to go play today in mountain bike down south.
It was a good day for it.
Oh, it's gorgeous.
Hey, my, 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 my only comment is, I'm with Bob, I mean, I, I, I get the fact that when we're in the city, there are times where certain part portions of the city have to be in-inordinately burdened by some issue, and that was the case here. But that doesn't mean that we can't try to accommodate them when that happens, and this is one where um, I would feel like unless it's, it's fairly outrageous, which this isn't clearly, um, I'd say let's take their, their input and let's go with that.
Thank you, Paul. Just so you guys are aware, cause I don't know, I know like, between Bakers and I, we still have probably close to 10,000 sandbags still up here. Two and a half years later, mitigation's done and it's still a pain in the ass to get in my driveway, sorry.
We need to get rid of those sandbags, uh?
Yeah, I, I've tried using that 40 or 50 in the yard, but I can't use 10,000, sorry.
I think, uh, Corbett and Craig were still working on, uh, on removing them or, uh, he, I think Corbett, didn't you say that, uh, the water line was maybe still going to be using those after all? I mean, for a while they said they were and then they said they weren't, and now.
Ken said they were looking at using them, they just need to get something to haul them with.
Yeah, biggest challenge right now is the snow and ice that are around them.
Vancon does not want them, they were willing to pick, take them, as long as the sandbags were in good enough shape that they could reuse them. The first truckload that they took, they ended up junking, throwing them away, and so they told us they, they don't want any more of them, we got to get rid of them.
So that's definitive, Corbett?
What's that?
All right.
Yeah. Well, gosh, once the snow and the ice leave. Well, gosh, once the snow and the ice leave, I wouldn't mind if we tried to get a big group of volunteers from the city just to go up and move them somewhere.
They've all been, most all of them have been put on pallets. And John and I have, have both volunteered that when the weather's good enough, we will volunteer to help move them.
Great. I've got, I've got four boys still at home that, that I'm itching to get them to do something, so.
Yeah, our, our skid steer has pallet forks, those trucks, when the salt beds go off, you've got flatbeds, take the rails off. We've got the means to move them, it'd just be a cost of some diesel.
Yeah.
The question is, where do you take them or where do you put them? And I don't have that answer.
Yeah, and it's, John and I are both snow cloud drivers, we're checked out on all that.
We're approved on your insurance.
So maybe Corbett, I know this is an aside, but Corbett, maybe we, you and Bob can put some thought into where, where to put those. Corbett's got lots of ideas. He's moving things here and taking things from there, so he might, we, we might be able to find something there.
That, that was a side note. Go ahead and go back to your ordinance.
Yeah. Cor, you can tell me to shut up whenever, but Corbett has, he's a guy with some solutions typically, so. Okay, so back to the, the, the discussion that we do, you're right, Carrie, I'm sorry, I forgot. Carrie had made a motion to accept the language. As written. Now, there's been some discussion about potentially adding a phrase like. And similar or something to the split rail fence definition.
I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of the amendment.
Okay. Add that to the amendment.
Can we specify what that amendment would be?
Maintain a split rail, install and maintain a split rail fence. Or similar materials, look and feel materials.
Good enough for me.
Carrie, you okay with that?
Yep.
All right, so we got a motion with that?
I'll second it.
Bob's second that, okay. Any further discussion? All right, do a roll call vote. Doral.
Yes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
And me, yes. Can I have an amen?
Amen.
Okay, the number four, city vehicle and equipment policy. Discussions, motions, questions?
We had a discussion earlier, but I don't know if we had a clear motion on what that would entail. Other than that we want to have a policy put into place. But we have anything, I didn't see anything given to us in writing with a clear. Description of exactly what that policy is. Did, did I miss it?
Sent something in writing in an email. Jody, is that right?
Yeah, the policy was included in the email with all of the documentation for today.
I must have just missed over it. I saw, I was looking through all of that, but I must have missed that one.
Let, let's go ahead and read that.
You really want to read that? That's like six pages, five pages.
Okay.
It's more than you want to read. And I, I guess here's the question, Jody. Would this go in the? I mean, where, where does this go? Is it like something that goes in the employee handbook? Is, I mean, where does?
The mayor has started a policy handbook. And she's passed different policies and procedures, and so this would become part of the policies and procedures handbook for the city.
I found it, thank you. I'm sorry, I just, for whatever reason, when I was looking through it, I missed it, but I am quickly looking it over, so. Keep having the discussion.
No, I don't see that, you know, it, it's something that has to be passed this evening, if people want to look it over further. And then we can, the mayor's got the format that she uses and I wasn't able to get that from her. But we can put it in the policy and procedures format and. Assign it a number and we can adopt it at the next city council meeting or you're welcome to adopt it at this one, that's.
I would prefer to go that route. It's a very, it's a well-written document, but if, Jody, you could put it in the final version, I.
I'd be happy to.
I'd like that, that's my opinion.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of detail in here that I think that we need to review. But I haven't seen anything that gives me heartburn, but, but it does share a lot of. Of. Fact-based criteria.
So do we table it for today then?
Yes.
My vote.
Dave, what do you think?
Yeah, I agree, but I'll second what Doral said. It is well-written. It's fairly comprehensive. The only question I have is, does it apply to other types of vehicles like tractors? Backhoes, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Equipment, and so I would assume that would mean those things as well.
Yeah, it, it, there's a lot of, there's some subsections like accidents and drivers training and. And those types of things, so yeah, I, I think it covers everything. Maybe it needs to be more specific, but. It, it addresses it in some form or fashion.
Well, Jody, thanks for raising this issue and appreciate getting that. So if you, if everyone can take some time over the next couple of weeks to review that. Be ready to make a decision next time, that's great. So we'll table it for now. Last issue, events and city facilities use permit. We've had the discussion. Thanks again to Greg Witt for his work. Any questions, comments, motions?
I'll make a motion that we accepted as given to us by the Parks and Rec Committee. I think they did their due diligence, so. I recommend it as written.
Okay, we've got a motion?
I will second that.
You're all second that, okay. Any other discussions before we make a decision?
But my only concern is that it's so strong on what you can't do. As far as fires, it doesn't say anything about what you can do. For, like it says, absolutely no fires of any kind allowed. This excludes abachi fires and charcoal briquettes.
It includes.
Yes, this includes, but it doesn't say anything about gas. Propane or that, those kinds of, of, of that are permitted. It just says of any kind, and so in, in my reading of that, it would say that you couldn't have a propane barbecue. Grill there. You couldn't have a, a propane. Pitfire or anything like that. And as I understood what the chief said. Thou, those are allowed based upon our current codes and standards.
We add that caveat is. Fires permitted as per city code.
Da da da.
Excluding, but excluding briquettes and open flame. Or whatever our ordinance says.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure the code covers it.
Yeah, but people won't look up the code, so I think that if putting the exclusion on there helps remind them what that means.
Yeah, they're absolutely right.
All right.
Aanded that, that, that one thing to allow.
He calls it liquid fuel or something.
And, and the chief probably can give us the right words to, to put in.
Yeah, the other question I have, and I know I'm opening a huge can of worms.
You're gonna do this to us at nine o'clock, Dave?
I'm sorry. But we actually had a campout in the park with our eleven-year-old scouts. And it was a great experience. And I just wondered, do we really want, I, I, it kind of along the same lines of. Do we really want to say no, never, or do we want to put in place like? Very specific exclusions, I mean, again.
Yeah, some sort of permit required.
Yeah, because I, I think that was the idea was to just have a permit for larger groups. Who were using the pavilion, because we'll have people who, who rent it out. And, you know, they may be having a wedding or whatever that has been in the past and. And another group comes along and says, oh, look, no one's using it, we'll use it, and then. It causes some friction, so I think that that's part of why the Parks and Recs wanted to. Look at other cities and county and see kind of what they were doing so that we could maybe have it be more unified, uniform.
Well, I, I think that, that we all agree with that. I think that, that the last bullet is one that we need to maybe modify my. A slightly that says, it currently says no camping allowed in the park. The park is not attended for overnight use of any kind. We, we could potentially add something on there that says that.
Got a permit?
We've had a permit.
Yeah, permit.
I would suggest that you get with the Park, Recs and Trails Committee.
Yep.
Send your comments to them, because then that's a whole nother permit we've got to make. And I don't want to pass something or approve something without that other permit being in place, because too often that other permit gets forgotten. That we need to do it, and then we've got a rule in place and no way to back that rule.
Good point.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, so, so should we table it then? I can, I can withdraw my motion and table it until we get that other wording, because. I think we don't want just anyone and everyone coming and sleeping out in the park, but at the same time, David, you've brought up a good point. We have. We have scouts who live here in our neighborhood who with a permit would, we would know that they were there. Law enforcement would know that they were there and that they weren't just vagrants and, and up to no good, so. Because our, our park does have hours that close. And so maybe with a permit, then at least we would be able to let people know that they're there and we know they're there.
Well, or we could just make the decision, because again, I'm, I'm, I mean, believe me, I'm, I'm on the, I'm in the middle here. Because it's tough for a, you know, law enforcement to enforce something if it's. Well, if they have a permit, they're okay. He drives by, how does he know if they've got a permit? You know, that, that can be tough, so. I'm just saying, I think we need to at least ask the question. Do we want to allow any overtime use or overnight use? If we don't. I can roll that way or I can roll the other way.
Well, or it's even use after the park hours have closed. I know that there have been people saying, well. If it closes at ten, can we not stay up and, and watch the stars at midnight or whatever, right? It's going to be a meteor shower, one of those special things that are all over the media. Can we not go into the park with our telescopes and watch those in the middle of the night? Well, yeah, those are some extenuating circumstances. They're not normal everyday things. Maybe we do need to have a little bit more discussion on, on the night. At, at the same time, our park has, as we know, has been used by people outside of our city and. And people have brought their kids on a Saturday morning to play at the park and there's, they find. Drug paraphernalia and other things of people who have come in the middle of the night. And, and done things that we wouldn't necessarily want done at our park.
So I would kind of tape, ask, kind of going off of what you said, Carrie, that we potentially table this. We send it back to the Trails Committee and ask them to. Look at both of these items, see if there's an appropriate workaround. Where potentially if we do authorize overnight camping with permit, that there's some way to. Display that permit so that if the sheriff drives by, he can check it. Without bothering the, the participants. And maybe even just drive by, shine a light on it and see that, see it and go on, but I, but I think that they can come up with something that. Would be beneficial for both of those.
Well, and I think one of the concerns maybe of the residents who surround the park is the reason that we have it. Close is for noise ordinance, right? That there's not just a whole bunch of loud noise after ten o'clock at night, which is, which is our ordinance. So I guess part of that may be in consideration of a permit, what that would mean. For scouts who are having a great time or anyone else who had a permit for staying overnight in the park.
Yeah, there, there could be a, a, a note here about the noise ordinance and all that kind of stuff on that second permit. That they, that they need to follow, so.
Want to table this? With instruction that we get all of our comments to, to the committee there. In plenty of time for them to analyze and make recommended, recommended changes.
I wrote a, I wrote a list of items for them to help us with and consider.
Adora, you'll take that to them?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks, Doral.
A week from tomorrow, yeah.
Great. Well, that is it, ladies and gentlemen, we are at the end of our business and discussion. Notwithstanding Dave's attempt to hijack us and take us till eleven, it's not going to work, Dave.
Thank you.
I moved that we dismiss. Adjourn.
By the motion to adjourn?
I second that.
All right, let's go through. Bob?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Doral?
I'd really like to stay on with you all.
No, I'm good.
Doral's gonna stay on without the rest of us. All right, I'm for it too. Good night, everyone, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.